First one is George Blush and I'll call him.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So Commissioners?
Yes.
I have to excuse myself from this one because somebody just recently is doing something financial for me. I just found this out the other day and I have to excuse myself from this aspect of it. It wouldn't have changed anything about how I feel about anybody, but at the same time, because it is actually they're doing a financial thing, I can't get involved in that. So if you don't mind, I will step out and just go silent.
Okay.
How do you excuse yourself?
You can mute your cell phones and stay on, I would think.
Yeah.
Good morning, George.
Okay.
Okay, it's Diane from Mason County Commissioners and I think they're about ready to do the interview, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so you're part of our live streamed public Commissioner briefing meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, Commissioner Shutey, are we ready to jump into this?
I am ready.
Okay. You're just a little choppy, but this was fun. It makes it exciting. All right, we are moving into our Mason County Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board interviews. Our, the first person we have is George Blush. Good morning, George. Can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
All right, fantastic. Commissioner Shutey, if you could start with question one and we'll just alternate it.
Sure. All right, morning, George. First question is what do you see as the function of this advisory board?
What I see is what? Say it again.
What do you see as the function of this advisory board?
I think this board requires the County Commissioners on how to best spend funds for mental health and housing-related issues.
Okay.
Yep. Absolutely. I work in the mental health field right now, part-time. I work at the telecare facility that you went and toured, I believe, Kevin, not so long ago, and I understand the need of this here in Mason County. You also know I own Neadis and I get to see a lot of our mental health patients from around the communities, right out in front of my shop every day at Pizza Club. And I understand the importance of this and I completely am 100% supportive of anything we can do to help these people.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to question number two. George, why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
Say it again. You kind of like want to for some reason.
Why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
Oh, because I think I have a lot of pertinent information regarding, you know, the mental health crisis that we have here in Mason County and throughout the country. In fact, especially now there's the COVID and whatnot that we have going on, there's a lot of people that are having a lot of different issues that are arising out there, just figuring out. Because, you know, they're being home with their spouses and things like that and there's a lot of people that have mental health issues that need help. And we definitely need to address it and I think that I have a lot of good input that I can give and I think I could be a big help to the boards.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Next question, George, is sometimes this board may have an evening meeting, but typically we meet in the mornings on Wednesdays at the end of the month. Will that be a problem for you?
Not at all, not at all. On my own block, but you know, I can be where I need to be when I need to be.
Great.
All right, George, this board, oh, sorry. Let's go on to the next one. Do you have any conflicts of interest with the mission of this advisory board?
I have any what? Conflicts of interest? Oh, no, ma'am.
Conflicts of interest?
Everything I'm involved with actually probably supports, you know, me being on this board.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, George, our last question is, do you have any questions for us?
No, not at all. Actually, I don't usually apply for my boards and when I do it, my research is trying to figure out what's what, what the, what I'm going to get myself involved in and I think that this is a fantastic opportunity for media involved in something like this. I guess I do the work every day. I deal with these people all the time. And I think it's a wonderful thing that you guys are working on here and I think we can do a lot and I hope you guys consider me.
All right. All right, thank you, George. That's all the questions we have for now, so we will let you know the outcome as soon as we finish all the interviews.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, guys.
All right, thanks, George.
Have a great day.
You too.
Okay.
Okay, so do you want me to call Ginny?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Hello, this is Ginny.
Hi Ginny, it's Diane at Mason County Commissioners.
Hello.
Good morning. So I have you as part of the live Commissioner briefing meeting and it's being Zoomed, so the interview will be conducted via Zoom with the Commissioners, okay?
Oh, okay. I look pretty rough, but what, are you sending me a link?
No, you're just going to be on the telephone there on Zoom.
Oh, I like that because I really look pretty bad. I didn't fix my hair or nothing.
No, we just, we just hear you.
Okay, awesome.
Hi Ginny, you have Commissioner Shutey and Commissioner Trask here. We're going to ask you some questions and just feel free to answer however you would like.
Okay.
And Commissioner Shutey will ask the first question.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Ginny, our first question for you this morning is what do you see as the function of this advisory board?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know exactly what the function is, but it's an advisory board. And so my assumption is that you would prob, we would probably be doing some investigative work as far as, you know, maybe working within the community to see what the community feels about certain issues. I think that we would be directed by the actual board and, but we would have absolutely no power to make any decisions. It's just informational only.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Ginny, why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
Why do I want, okay, um, why do I want to be on this? Because I am now, I'm the school board director and I'm the chair of the school board. I've been on, I've been on the WADA legislative committee, making, working with the legislature to try to change proposals, et cetera. And I'm getting to a point where I am probably going to not run again for school board. And I would like to stay a little bit busy and keep my hand into, into some sort of a project that I can actually, you know, contribute. In other words, you know, if it's just informational only, I don't have the responsibility of making the decision. That's up to you guys. But I would like, but I can do the grunt work and get the information for you.
All right, thank you.
Ginny, this board occasionally may meet in the evenings, but typically meets on the last Wednesday of the month in the morning. Any issues with that?
The last day of what, what day?
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays is not a problem.
Okay, perfect.
All right Ginny, do you have any conflicts of interest with the mission of this advisory board?
Between anything that I'm doing currently?
Right.
I'll be honest with you, right now I'm working on trying to, I'm working with Randy Netherland and I don't know if it's not a conflict of interest for me, but it might be a conflict of interest for him. I've talked to him about it, thinking, I don't know if it is something he would need to refuse himself for. But I don't want, if that is an issue and that does become a conflict, I will back out rather than cause trouble and, you know, cause any kind of, I don't want to cause anything that might get into papers or, you know, you know what I'm saying, that might be able to cause trouble for anybody. But that would be the only thing that I could see a conflict because the school board is a totally separate entity. Yes, there's housing issues. Yes, there's behavioral health issues, but those issues are with kids and they're not necessarily, I would assume, with this particular board. If there is, I would be, I would be the first one to say, whoa, wait a minute, I'm making decisions on my school board. I can't, I can't participate in this.
All right, great. And thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Netherland did refuse himself from the interviews, so we thank you for clarifying that as well.
Ginny, our last question is, do you have any questions for us?
Okay. I'm going to ask you the same question you asked me in the first one. What does the advisory board do?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so I'm fortunate enough to represent the Commission on the Advisory Board as the Chair of it. And one of the main functions of the board is to weigh in on different funding levels for programming in the community. We get a lot of updates and information from community partners that the county funds through recording fees and treatment sales tax and a variety of other grant fund sources that come from both the county, state, and federal governments. And so, you know, that has been the bulk of the work so far. I think the group has expressed some interest in being a little bit more proactive in, in some of that stuff. So it continues to evolve. It's a fairly new advisory board relative to the other ones like Planning Commission or the TIPCAP transportation one. So it's continuing to kind of grow and take shape. But generally speaking, it's just about weighing in on some of the critical behavioral health and housing issues in the county and trying to put together good policy recommendations for the county commission to consider as well as those funding recommendations.
Is that something that you would want community, in other words, I'm, I don't know if it's district only or if it's for the whole thing, but I'm involved in the community with my Harstein Club, with Timberlake, because I've been to Shorecrest, et cetera, through my school board. Is that something that you would want these board members to participate in so that they can get feedback from the community?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, everybody that has been on it to this point has been able to bring back some of those ideas and concerns that they're hearing in the community and share those with the advisory board. So I think that's always welcome.
Okay. All righty, well, how long is the duration of the board's term?
I'm not sure how long this, if, I'm not sure if this position is filling in an expired term, but I think they generally run four years.
Okay. Okay, I have no other questions. I'd just like to say thank you and I appreciate you considering me. And I will, if selected, I will do whatever I can in order to make you guys look good. How does that sound?
Good luck.
Okay.
All right, we will, we will complete the interviews today and then we will let you know as soon as we know something.
Okay, okay. I thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I sure appreciate your application.
Okay.
Thanks Ginny.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, I'm going to call Kathy.
Yep, that'll work.
Hi, this is Kathy.
Hi, this is Diane from Mason County Commissioners. You're now part of our,
Good morning.
Good morning. So you're now part of our public briefing meeting for the interview and the Commissioners are interviewing via Zoom.
Wonderful.
Okay?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Hi Kathy, this is Sharon, Sharon Trask and with me I have Commissioner Shutey.
There Kathy.
Good morning.
We will go ahead and we're going to ask you a series of questions. Feel free to answer however you would like to and Commissioner Shutey is going to take the first question.
Thank you. Kathy, our first question this morning is what do you see as the function of this advisory board?
The function is to meet monthly. I know you all have your monthly meetings Wednesday mornings and occasionally in the evenings. And to bring a level of expertise to, to communicate with the Commissioners and bring up, you know, what's going on on the ground in the community and to bring our professional expertise into those matters.
Great, thank you.
All right, Kathy, why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
I obviously live in Shelton and I'm eligible to apply for this position and I've lived here for about three years now. And I love Mason County and I am a social worker and I'm trans and I'm queer, transgender, that is. And I have felt in our county very welcomed and affirmed, which is why I'm so happy to be here. I don't take that for granted and I see this community, I see how this community holds me. And I've also been in communities where I've not felt that way. And so I understand what that experience is like. And I have been working on the ground in Mason County. Well, I was working for the Telecare outreach team, doing crisis work throughout Mason County when it first opened. And I did that for about two years until I then just worked for the city of Shelton. And I just finished up my position with them. They eliminated this position from, because of the impact of, the economic impact of COVID on the city. And so in the work that I've done on the ground in this community, I see that there's still work to be done because of the stigma of mental illness and because access to, to mental health care. And so I want to be part of, you know, I'm, I'm, I have a vision of everyone in our community being safely housed. And I have a vision of our community supporting people living with mental illness. And because I know from the work on the ground that it is a community issue and that it requires community power to overcome. And I'm optimistic about Mason County and our ability to move forward together as a community.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So Kathy, as you mentioned at the beginning, the board sometimes meets in the evenings. Typically though, meets Wednesday mornings here at the county building. Is there any issues with that schedule?
I'm self-employed. I make my own schedule and this is something that, so I'm self-employed as a therapist, teletherapist. And so I make my own schedule and I would prioritize this because, you know, doing teletherapy, I'm not, I'm, I wouldn't be as connected with the community as I have been. And so this is something that I've really thought about and would really like to do to ensure that I'm continuing to connect with the local community here. So yeah, I have no, I can make the meetings and I would absolutely prioritize that.
Great, thank you.
So Kathy, do you have any conflicts of interest with the mission of this advisory board?
No.
Great, I didn't think.
Then our last, our last question is, do you have any questions for us?
Yes, what kind of skills or perspectives or, I guess, what kind of skill sets and perspectives are you, do you think you'd really be looking for or do you think that you're maybe missing from the current advisory board?
I'll go ahead and give my perspective and then maybe Commissioner Trask can weigh in too. I think one of the things that we're missing on the board right now, you know, is kind of connecting a little bit more strongly the housing and behavioral health pieces together in a, with a sort of a big picture approach. We have really good people on the, on the, on the advisory board who are also doing that work. But on the citizen's side, I think we could have a stronger sort of connection between some of the big picture elements of both behavioral health and housing. And so I think that would be really helpful. And I think just kind of being critical about where the gaps in our community are and being able to kind of understand the challenges that service providers in the community face and kind of how to, how to help staff kind of coach those service providers through some of those, some of those gaps. So those would be a couple of things that I think would be important from my perspective.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that. I think that there are some significant gaps. I think during this pandemic, we've, we've realized a lot more. I myself have been pretty active in this and I can see where more of our needs need to be focused, I guess.
Okay.
All right, Kathy, thank you so much. We are going to review the applicants and then we will let you know as soon as we have an answer. But we truly appreciate you putting in your application.
Wonderful. It was great meeting you all this way. I hope we get to talk again sometime soon.
Really good.
That would, that would be great. I'd love to meet you, Kathy.
Well, you're my commissioner, so.
And that's a good thing.
I can't see, this is, that's Tracy, right?
I'm sorry?
I can't see who you, I can't see who you are, but I think you're my commissioner.
If you live in Shelton, and I think you do, I am your commissioner. Actually, we're all three your commissioner, but I'm your district commissioner.
Right. Well, thank you for taking the time to interview me.
Thank you Kathy for showing an interest and being a part, such a valuable part of our community.
Wonderful.
I'm hanging up.
All right, bye.
Bye-bye.
All right Diane, our next step would be to cut some discuss?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll let you kind of, since it's your district, I'll let you kind of maybe see where you land and go from there.
Okay. All three of them are very active in the community, I know. And I think each of them would make a great, they would be a great asset in addition to the Committee. Because this is your board, where, where do you think the greatest need is?
You know, like I said when I just answered the question, I think having, you know, having people that can kind of take a 30,000-foot look at things would be really helpful and just sort of make those connections between, you know, sort of taking a comprehensive look at, at our housing and behavioral health policies and funding and sort of identifying where our weaknesses are and where we can, where we can improve. So, you know, I think those would be my priorities.
Okay. And this is going to be tough because I know all three of them have a passion for this.
I also think, I'll say this too, I think we only have on the board, we don't, we have, we have a lot of representation from the outline parts of Mason County, the rural parts. You know, and so I think it might be helpful to have a little bit more perspective from Shelton to help us sort of interface with the city a little bit more.
Okay, yeah, I think that that's, that would be good too. And honestly, I think I'm leaning toward Kathy.
Okay, yeah, I think certainly strong resume, strong background. I love that Kathy has a clinical background. I think that'll help as well as experience, you know, working, working with the city. So I would be on board with that for sure.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we offer the position to Kathy then?
Okay, works for me.
Okay. Diane, will we send him a letter or give him a call?
Kathy, yes, I'll contact him. So I suspect we're going to amend tomorrow's agenda, August 4th, because our next regular agenda is the end of the month, August 25th. Do you want me to put the appointment on tomorrow's meeting or wait till August 25th?
That would be great.
Okay. Wasn't sure when they might meet again, so. You're good with that, Commissioner Shutey?
Yeah, yes, yep, sorry, I'm good.
Okay.
All right, great. Well, it is 9:30, so we can move on into our regular briefing. And let's make sure that we can get Commissioner Netherland back on.
I'll go check. And then Chelsea from the State Auditor, I'm sure she was part of the invite. I don't know if she's lined on yet.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good.
Hi Chelsea, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
That's good.
All right, looks like we've got Commissioner Netherland. It looks like we are all accounted for.
Perfect, thank you. I'm just waiting, let's see, okay, perfect. Just making sure that my SAO people are on here too. All right, so I have Carol Ellinger and then Cheryl Friesen with me as well. And it looks like their videos are shared too, so they're also on the call and here.
Good morning.
So I had our entrance document, I emailed it to Diane. That had all the planned areas that we're gonna go over. I'm not sure, do you guys know if I'm able to share? I was gonna share my screen just to talk about it and go over everything, but it says that host disabled participant screen sharing. Do you know if that's something that can be disabled? Or I can just talk about everything we're gonna go over too, but.
We can try to have Frank give you control.
Okay.
I'm looking for it right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank.
So your host Chelsea, so you should be able to go in and share.
Awesome. Can you, can everybody see my screen now?
We can, thank you.
Awesome, great. All right, so thank you all for joining us today. I'm gonna go over our planned audit scope for the fiscal year 2019 audit. If there are any questions, concerns, or anything as we go through this, please let me know. And I'd be happy to try to answer them or shift them to Carol or Cheryl to help answer them as well. So a typical audit, so we're gonna be going over the accountability, financial, and federal audit this morning. So for our accountability audit, we will examine the management use and safeguarding of public resources to ensure there is protection from misuse and misappropriation. In addition, we will evaluate whether there is reasonable assurance for adherence to applicable state laws, regulations, and policies and procedures. So this year, we're gonna be looking at the following areas, so self-insurance. We're required to look at that every two years, any local government that self-insures for anything. So that's on our list this year. The clerk's office for cash receiving and adjustments, accounts payable, credit cards, and electronic fund transfers. The use of restricted funds for hotel motel taxes, rural sales and use tax, auditors O and M, and auditors O and M fund as well. Then we're also going to be looking at budget compliance, the sheriff's office for citation reconciliations, cash receiving, and contract monitoring, as well as the landfill cash receiving, the auditor's office cash receiving, parks and fair cash receiving and contract monitoring, and then the assessor's office property tax valuations and billings and exemptions and deferrals. So I know that was kind of a mouthful, but are there any questions about any of the areas that we're planning on looking at this year? Any concerns with that?
I haven't seen yet.
Perfect. Yeah, I know I sent the list out to Leo earlier or last week, so. Perfect. So we will also be performing a financial statement audit for 2019. So we'll look at the financial statements and provide an opinion on whether they're presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with the applicable reporting framework, so the county's cash basis, so we'll be auditing in accordance with that. And then we'll also be performing a federal grant compliance audit for 2019. So this is required by federal law and there are specific guidelines of the dollar amount that we are required to look at each year. So we will have to test four different programs this year, so the highway planning and construction cluster, which we typically audit each year. And then we will also be looking at the child support enforcement grant, the disaster grants for public assistance, and the schools to road grants to states grant. And then at the end of the audit, we'll work with Leo to make sure that the data collection form is submitted to the federal clearinghouse within the county's deadline. And then the next area, so the engagement letter, we've already provided this to Leo and then Leo, Sharon, and Patty have already signed this. So it just confirms management responsibilities and then our responsibilities as well. And then identifies like the cost, the timeline, and the expected communications as well. And then levels of reporting, so I'm pretty sure we're all familiar with this, but just as a brief refresher, findings are formal issues identified in our audit report that report significant issues and significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. That's formally included in our audit report. Management letters communicate control deficiencies but are less, less formal. So they're communicated to management formally, but they're not included in our published audit report, but they are referenced in the audit report. And then exit items are items that we communicate to management, but they're not included or referenced in our audit report. They're more housekeeping items that we keep between us and the staff. And then if we scroll down here, important information. So any confidential information, our office is committed to protecting it. So we've already been doing this with Leo and Lisa with a lot of the bank statements and stuff like that. We have been using the secure file transfer. So we ask that any information that might include sensitive information, including birthdays, socials or bank account information that we go through a secure file transfer versus email with that. And then the audit costs are estimated to be approximately $100,600 plus travel expenses. So this year, we are conducting the audit entirely remotely. So there will be limited travel expenses with us picking up documents. So for example, I came and picked up some documents from Lisa for the bank statement review. But that'll, it'll be extremely limited back and forth picking of documents, stuff like that. And then during the course of the audit, we'll communicate with Leo on the audit status, any significant changes in our planned audit scope, any scheduling issues. And then if there are any issues or concerns during our audit, I believe everybody has my email, but we'll also expect Leo to keep us up to date on any significant issues that come up as well. And then the audit dispute process, so we like to ask, like, if there's any issues, you know, that come up, feel free to contact me or Cheryl or Carol to see if we can get anything resolved. And then there's also information here for any unresolved disagreements, the county's, you know, process for that and what that would look like. So the assistant director as well. And then loss reporting. Should I, sorry, I don't know if you guys see this, it says that somebody's in the waiting room. I'm not sure if I should admit them. I guess it's coming to me because I'm the host now.
I'd probably go ahead and admit them.
Okay, perfect. Thank, I just noticed that. I'm like in my script right now, so. All right, so loss reporting as well, so state agencies and local governments are required to notify our office in the event of any known or suspected loss or other illegal activity. And there's a link there, the peer reviews of the Washington State Auditor's Office. So we're also required to get audited. Every three years, we have these external peer reviews. And then we have the results of the audits there at this link. Our office received a pass rating, which is the highest level of assurance for that. And then some emerging issues for local government. So I included this in the handout to the commissioners and everybody. I sent it over to Leo. It's just some guidance on different standards that are being implemented over the next couple of years and when those standards will be in effect and when they'll be required to be updated and everything. And then working together to improve government. So at the end of the audit, when the reports are released, the county will receive an audit survey from us and we really value your opinions on the audit and hope that you guys provide us feedback. Typically, we send them out to the commissioners, Leo, and then I believe Patty, but they can be forwarded to anybody. So any staff that we're working with, Leo or anybody, can feel free to forward it to them as well. And then there's a couple teams here that are focused on government support. So the teams that focus on our help desk are answering client questions, the local government support team, and then as well as the Center for Government Innovation. So they have their contact information and then just like a brief summary on the work that they deal with our local governments. And then at the end here, we have all of our biographies and then contact information as well. So for Cheryl and then Carol, so Cheryl's the assistant audit manager, so Zach's typical role. Zach had to switch off this year, so Cheryl is in place of that and then Carol as well. And then our assistant director of local audit and then director of local audit. So that's everything from me. Are there any questions or concerns about any of that?
Any questions, commissioners? I'm seeing shaking of their heads. I would assume that there are no questions as of today.
Perfect, great. And yeah, I think everybody has my contact information. So if anything comes up during the course of the audit, yeah, feel free to send me an email and I'd be happy to get answers to those questions.
All right, we do have one question from our auditor. I mean, our assessor, trying to get a copy of the presentation, is that correct?
Oh, yeah. I can definitely send, I can send this.
It's in the briefing.
It's in the briefing packet, right?
It's in the briefing. It's in the briefing packet and I'm gonna email it out to everyone as well.
Great, thank you, Leo.
All right, perfect.
Well, this is Carol. I have one more thing. So all of the money that's coming out from the federal government is coming out to entities with very little guidance. So the compliance requirements will come subsequent to the money, which we know is not a very good way of doing it, but that's how things are coming. So the Department of, the Washington Department of Commerce has a website that has a lot of information about the federal dollars that are coming out with the CARES Act and then whatever they subsequently come up with in the next few weeks. My suggestion and our suggestion as an office has been to make sure that if you decide to spend money and you don't have any compliance requirements and you need to document what you're spending it on and why you're spending it on, on that particular money, on that particular item or activity. Because when we come in and we can see the documentation, then we can understand how your thought process worked. Also, all of, when they do come out with any compliance requirements or some information, that is subject to change at a moment's notice. And once they make the change, whatever compliance requirements you were working with before that change was made will be, will be gone. So if you have some compliance requirements that you've been given or sent from your cognitive agencies, I would definitely print that off or screenshot it or something because if there's a change made, that will be gone. You won't be able to go back to it. So again, document, make sure you have your, if you have support, make sure you keep your support. So we expect an interesting year next year when we audit. So it should be an interesting year for the counties and the cities and all of our public entities with the money that's coming out through the federal government at this point. So that's just a warning and information and all of those kind of things. So like I said, the Department of Commerce, their website has a lot of great information on there. And I would point you to that particular website for, if you have questions, they have a lot of question and answer facts and all kinds of things out there. It's, there's a lot of information up there. So that, just letting you know.
We appreciate that. I know we've been advised to screenshot and then we also make sure that we can answer the five questions.
Right.
And so hopefully, we're right on. Lots of screenshots, things quickly, don't they?
They do. Anyway, just thought I'd give you that little speech that I've been giving everybody we work with, so.
We appreciate that.
All right.
I think that's all we have.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions?
To working with you and I'm, you know, I'm sure we're doing good in this environment. We've, you know, we've thrown into it as you did too, but I think we worked out a lot of kinks and it sounds like you guys are able to work well with Chelsea, so that's really great and we really appreciate that.
Carol, your staff are always excellent.
It's been a challenge. I have to say, we've had some challenges, but I think we're getting the hang of it, so.
Great, but we appreciate you.
We appreciate you too. You're, you know, easy to work with.
You didn't used to say that.
And we got, we got you whipped in shape.
And we.
So, so anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
You too.
All right, let's move on to community services. Dave, show, let's see, shall we go around the room? We'll go around the Zoom room. And I will mention who we have. If we have more, then please let me know if I don't see somebody. So we have Patty McGuire, Patty McLean, Commissioner Netherland, Dave Wyndham, Commissioner Schutte, Frank Pinter, Diane in the control room, and Jennifer. All right, Dave.
Okay, so with me, I also have Lydia, so she's off cam here, so. First item we're going to go over is the Consolidated Homeless Grant and it's brought forward by Todd Parker. It's a contract amendment. And we just need to take it out to action agenda for August 4th.
To add that on to the tomorrow's action agenda.
It's, you really need it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm okay.
Commissioner Schutte, are you good with it?
I am, yep. All right, super. Next item then is the CARES Act Funding Eviction Rent Assistance Program, ERAP. It's effective August 1st through December 31, intended to prevent evictions by paying up to 80% for three months of past due, current due, future rent while targeting limited resources to those with the greatest needs. The goal is to promote equality and who is served, focus on equity for groups of people who historically have not been provided equitable access to rent assistance in those who have been disproportionately affected. The effect of this is really to get the rent to the landlords. We realize that there's an anti eviction guidance out from the governor, but that's not helpful to the landlords. So what we're looking to do here with this funding is to assist everybody, get the rent paid and make sure that people stay in their homes.
Okay, so I see on here that says the request for proposals were due July 30th. All right, is that, is that when you're soliciting or when you're going out for requests? Because.
It's been done.
Oh, it has been?
Yeah.
Been completed? Do we, you two had that on the action agenda for us or?
Yes, please.
Commissioners, any, any opinion?
I have a quick question for Dave or Lydia. Who, again, who would be administering this? So how would, how would folks that are eligible for this tap into the, into the resource? Is that gonna be something handled on our side or is that something that's handled by one of our community partners?
Okay, go ahead. Lydia's right here.
So we're trying to set things up, so Todd's working with this, but so is Crossroads, but we're having a little bit of difficulty, plus my nurses who are actually ones that know who is in need in one aspect, but there's other people that can also apply for these. So we're trying to work everything through Crossroads, through their. So we're trying to work everything through Crossroads, through their coordinated entry, but that has some limitations that we're going to need to make some changes with Crossroads. So sometimes when they work in a standard for a while, they struggle in trying to adjust that and make, be flexible to do things differently. So, but there will be a process. And we prefer to go through coordinated entry, but sometimes speed and coordinated entry don't, aren't compatible when we're trying to keep somebody in their house from get, literally from going back to work and exposing other people.
So what we bumped into last week, we have been using some commerce funds. And the commerce funds allow us to put someone in a hotel motel, but does not allow us to pay our rent. So this is more efficient keeping someone in their home, connected to the family, connected to food. And that's what we're trying to do is just to keep them from, you know, leaving the home to go work because they're afraid of not paying their rent. And this allows us to cocoon those families in a, in a way that gets us through the COVID problem faster.
And just kind of taking a look at the, the budget that's attached to this. So there's some admin money that looks like it's capped at 15%. And then there's, it looks like about $100,000 to operations. What is the difference? What, what is the operations going to cover? And if we do do this through our coordinated entry program, do we get the, do we retain that admin portion to administer this or does that go to whoever, to, I mean, assuming Crossroads on the?
We're, we're working that. So in fact, we talked with Paige about it this last week. You know, do we want to have it just invoiced directly to us? And then through Crossroads, we're just, we're trying to work out those details.
Okay.
In some, in some ways it's faster if we can, can just have the landlord invoice us, we get it paid. But to, to be, I think a little more square with everyone going through Crossroads is, is the goal.
Okay.
So.
I guess, even given some of those challenges, provided we sign this tomorrow, what, how, how much longer do you think it would take to get this up and running and, you know, start getting funding out to those who need it?
It's, it's just, I, I don't, I think by the end of the week, we should have it up and running.
Yeah, it depends on, on commerce. It depends on the other end. Sometimes they put holes on things and don't have guidance.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And if, if necessary, what we can do is we can just do it direct and then build back.
Okay.
So did Commerce give you the, the guidelines? You know, the, the restrictions?
You know, Todd's not on the call and I think he didn't get a link to get on and he's the one that's handling all that.
But we did have Casey call last week and I was under the assumption, honestly, that we could do the rent directly. And through Casey, we found out, Todd had said, Casey, double check, correct? We can't do it in a way that we had intended to do it. So this, this gets us to where we can do it. So it's, it's all a color of money. It's depends on which bucket you, you pulled out of and which strings are in each bucket.
Right, right.
So on the agenda tomorrow, I want to ask, so it's the acceptance of the 500,000 with Commerce. So it's, it's the grant award from Commerce that's going on the agenda tomorrow, is that right?
Right.
Okay, because it says to accept contract and approve subcontracts, but I don't see any subcontracts that you have ready to put on there.
Yeah, what, what, we, I, I, Lydia says we can answer that question to the contract of Commerce.
About the subcontract?
Yeah, yeah, but it was contract.
Tomorrow's award will just be accepting the 500,000 with Commerce and.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll flow through the same process we use for other contracts.
Okay, and then we'll get that contract here shortly then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then what we need to do, to take a separate action and design the subcontract or is there?
I would, I would believe so, yeah. Where if it's a book, if it's more than $15,000, I think it should come back to the commission.
So we have to, we submit some proposals. They have to submit proposals.
Yep.
So we're still waiting for proposals from subcontractees.
Okay.
If I may ask a question. So with the acceptance of the 500,000 tomorrow, not having another board meeting for two weeks or three weeks, will you be able to enter into any other subcontracts until the next board meeting when those subcontracts are accepted? And does that become an issue for timing for you?
For us, it becomes an issue for timing, yes.
It would, it would probably be possible for us to have an emergency meeting, am I right?
Yes.
I think that probably the, the smartest course of action is to get the, the proposals, write those subcontracts, have an emergency meeting and deal with it upfront and get it out the door.
Yeah, we need to, to, to make sure that we, we can speed the process along, as long as we're following exactly what they're telling us to do. But people need our help, so the sooner we can help our, our people, the better.
I have no issue with a, a special meeting. I would prefer it because there's no way I would be supportive of just blanket saying we'll sign something without seeing it.
Right.
So special meeting seems like a, a no brainer for me.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so are we good on that one then?
We're good with the contract from, for the 500,000.
Okay, all right. Okay, and the next thing is you received a document a couple of weeks ago and I did some updates. And so you see all the draft changes on the Process Adjustment 2020. Okay, so what, what we're doing with this process adjustment is looking at all the things we've learned from COVID over the last six months and incorporating those into some changes in staffing and some processes that make us a little more efficient, take those things into account. I mean, really take our lessons learned and apply them going forward. Let's not go backwards. So on page three, you see the opportunities and the, the goals that we set out to adapt our business model to these new roles. I don't see things changing in the near future. And even if they do change, I think some of these things we've learned are going to work well. So there are pieces in here that require some staffing changes and those are outlined. And then on the last page, graph budgets are attached. So this will make changes to the budgets as proposed. The money is, we, we have the money, so breaking into two parts. If you look at community development, we're, we're doing well, cash, we've got good cash reserves. We're, are actually, our business is up this year. And one of the things we're trying to do is to add another person in the permit text in order to double our ability to intake, because right now that's our bottleneck. So if we tie community development to the economy, we will get, to attack the intakes right now. We use our COVID time to clean up all the backlog of permits. Good with that. So we have plenty of ability to address the permits that are coming through, but we need to increase our ability to intake. Eventually that bubble will move probably towards the building and as we get into Belfair, if we have an uptick in building in Belfair, we may wind up adding a building inspector there. That's down the line. Initially, we just need to attack the intakes and get that piece worked. Downstairs, we're looking to add halftime FTE to address some of the contract, tracking and management piece, because we are, are starting to do contracts with folks outside of our realm. So the, for example, the lead grant, other grants we're doing for, for community members. For the Health Coalition, we're doing that work inside of Public Health, where before it was done elsewhere. So we're asking for a little bit of help there. And again, those budgets are attached. We've got some technology pieces in here we're working on. And then with each of those things, we have to have the work plan and we'll adjust the work plans as we go, but I think the, the plan lays out and staff has had a chance to review this and make changes and suggest changes, so. I think it takes into account the things that we've learned, they've brought forward, we consolidated into one, one plan that has, has some very specific goals. So with that, I will take questions.
I have a, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
First, I, I appreciate all the thought that's gone into this. I know that this is, this is not the first time that we briefed this. This has been something that's been kind of kicking around for a while here. But what, I guess the two main questions that I have is, one, for somebody who comes into the community development side to apply for a single family residence permit, what will be different under this proposal than what they may have experienced in the past? And then a second question that I have is you mentioned the potential to, as development grows in the Belfair area, to potentially add someone specific to just that area for the building inspecting and that kind of thing. Metric do you have in mind that would trigger that expansion?
Okay, so what will change is, well, we should be able to, by adding another permit tech to intake, should be able to double our amount of intakes. Right now, we're taking intakes by appointment and we're doing between, I think, like six a day. Get that to 12 to 14 a day. We have the, the ability, I think, by adding a person to bring those numbers up. So with each person that comes in for a single family residence, it takes about an hour to do the full intake. So appointments have worked well for us in that there's no distractions. People have a dedicated time with the intake person and then get all their questions answered at one time. And really, when they're done, those pieces are distributed to planning, building and, and public health. So that piece is working very well. That, that part that used to sit on a shelf until they could get to it is actually going out right away. So it's much more efficient. And by adding another person, we can make those go out. So we don't have a bottleneck right now with building or planning or, or even an EH. One of the things we have done is that we've required people to kind of get their EH piece done in advance. So they have a separate design and water adequacy done before they come in to do the intake. And that's speeding up the process quite a bit. So people are, are getting there. All the things lined up ahead of time makes it faster. Second question was on the metric we're going to use for Belfair as we start to see the need for an inspector to be up there every day. And if we get apartment buildings going, we get commercial development going, you'll need an inspector up there daily, working those big projects. And so that will be, we start doing groundbreaking on big projects. That's where I will come back and ask for that ability. Oh, the, the other piece of this is on large commercial plans, we're going to outsource those right away. So they're not sitting here. We're going to outsource those to the people who do the large commercial plans and get those turned back much quicker than if we do them ourselves.
So on those large commercial plans, are you, the people that you subcontract those with, will you make sure that those are a priority for them?
So that's, that's going to be in, in some of the contract language is that, yeah, no, if we're going to pay extra, especially if we're going to expedite something, let's not pay extra to be at the bottom of the queue. You know, let's, let's get an assurance that we will go to the top of the queue.
I'm cheerful, if I may. First of all, I'm very supportive of this. Dave, you've kept me in the loop on, on this stuff and I'm very appreciative. I still have two things that I would like to see though. I'd like to see an actual verbiage for the trigger because I'd like it to become automatic. When we reach this trigger, if the commission ends up agreeing, I want to be able to go out for that immediately and make it happen. Because if we have to wait for two months, once something breaks, that doesn't help us. So I prefer to see the verbiage and have that come before the commission. I still have, it's not that I'm disagreeing or have issue with it. I just have issue with process. The moving of the finance manager from step 29 to 33, I still believe has to go through a reclass structure. It should, I don't know that.
And we will do that, yeah.
Yeah, as long as it's done that way, I could be supportive. I just can't be supportive of all of a sudden.
So.
Because there's so many other people that need reclasses too.
No, I understand that and we'll do the reclass. In fact, I've, I've got an email from the union asking for clarification on a number of things. So I'll get that clarified with the union and with Frank. So this, like I said, this is a preliminary plan and this is, make sure that we're going in the right direction, getting the products that we need out there and then we'll come back for final authorization.
I like how things have been working. Although this COVID thing has taken and changed everybody's lives, especially in your department, you found a way to streamline just about everything that I end up dealing with as a commissioner and they just keep getting handled one after another. So just know that I'm very appreciative and I think you're going in the right direction.
I like the quick response time with everyone and, and I appreciate you, you listening to me bellyache and, and.
All of us, Commissioner. All three of us.
Well, and I also like, so, so COVID has had some silver lightings, right? And one of those is pushing forward the electronics or SmartGup, making, making that a priority. I know when I was first elected, it was going to be available real soon. And so I think this has, has pushed it to the forefront. And I think.
With the addition of Bluebeam, it gives us the ability to integrate SmartGup and Bluebeam and Bluebeam being the software that our architects and designers are using. So we're able to import those files directly electronically and not have to go to a paper plan and, and get that done. So we can take those as they come in and distribute them to planning, building and public health without having to print things. So it, it, it does speed up the process and then goes into SmartGup to a workflow. So from here, I can look at, at a permit and see where it is in the workflow. So it's pretty nice.
The permits can also track it that way, correct?
Yep.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so what?
What, sorry, what, what's your timeline for turning this around and implementing it? What, what do we need to be expecting on our side?
Well.
And that kind of thing.
I'll give the union this week. We'll get those last questions answered. And the rest of it then is just really a question. Once you say yes, go forward with the plan. Then we execute all of the HR requirements, you know, for the create, post and fill and then reclassification request. So we'll get that worked out with the union, make sure that we're good there and then I'll come back. And once we get the okey dokey on that, we'll go ahead and start filling positions. I would ask though, really, if we could do a create, post and fill on the permit tech right away, regardless of this plan. I think that, that's critical to moving forward up here. To, I mean, we're in the middle of our building season. I'd like to get that filled as soon as possible.
Thank you.
I know, I would like to see movement on that. As soon as possible, we, to make sure that our, our builders are being seen. So it looks like our next commission briefing will be August 24th. Can you have something for us before then?
Can, I mean, I don't have any reservations with starting that process now. Given that it's an enterprise fund, the revenue and budget is there. I, I would be, I would be fine moving forward with that component of it today, if possible.
As would I, Commissioner.
I think we're all in agreement on that one.
Okay, we'll take it and move it forward then.
Great.
From HR.
Okay, sounds good.
So HR will get ahold of Dave, or will Dave get ahold of HR? So HR will get a hold of Dave or will Dave get a hold of HR?
Yes.
With the board making the approval to add the one position, we'll just move forward with it.
Sounds good. Okay, any other questions? For Dave? All right, Dave, what do you have next?
Oh, 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 yeah, okay. Before I go, Lydia is like, yeah, okay, so um so PHI, we've talked at length last couple of weeks about PHI. Lydia had some great conversations with PHI this last week as well as as I did on Friday and they're a great company. I think they're doing good things, but I don't think they're quite ready for us yet. So I'm going to keep moving forward on getting that contract ready because I want to have it in my pocket. But we've had some offers of assistance from the hospital and and others. So Lydia, go ahead. I'll let you go ahead.
So we put out an ad last week to try to get some Spanish speaking people to do some case investigations. We're being inundated. We can't keep up with it. I don't know if you you've probably noticed, we're up to 182 cases today. So there'll be more released from this weekend. We had 16 on this weekend alone. And pretty much 95% are Spanish speaking or or another language. So we put out an ad last Monday for some Spanish people speaking case investigators to be trained. We had a I think six respond. I did some screening of that this weekend. I also did a second screening email with people to get a little more information and I have two to three right now that are probably pretty ready to hire in the next 48 hours, which would be really important. And we have the hospital has been offering some support. So we've been working with them on changing some of their workflow to take some of the pressure off of the nurses because we were doing a lot before. Now we can't do some of the things and we're asking them to do it for us because it sort of starts on their end with their laboratory. So they've made some changes in the last over the weekend, which was a great help. We still have more and I'm working with Eric Moll and I'm going to have him assign someone to me to work directly on that to help keep moving things through a little faster. And then so at this point, because PHI and discussions with them that I had on Friday, they are not ready for us. They are not in place yet in a number of things. But they said it would be 10 to 12 days before they'll even be ready for that. So I can move a lot faster getting some people on boarded now and trained this week to help do some of these interviews so that we can keep on top of them within 48 hours of which we're trying to keep on top of. So anyway, kind of want permission to be able to do that. I think we by putting the ad out, I think we sort of got it, but I just wanted to brief you on where we're at with that, but I'm going to need to work with HR and move as fast as possible this week because I'll have to get them up trained. They're all working remotely from their homes. So I had to make sure they have the proper equipment, et cetera, which I've been doing this weekend. And then I need to get them trained and on boarded with DOH for the, it's called the Crest program that they're using to input the data directly to DOH.
Great. And so we're, those are are many of those nurses that were furloughed?
These are not nurses. They're not. They're not nurses. None of them are nurses. Okay. Most of them that I'm looking at in the applicants have a degree. They're all Spanish, very fluent in Spanish, reading and writing. And they have some medical background. Those are the ones that I chose. So people that kind of could onboard really rapidly and be doing interviews by Thursday. I mean, that's my goal. We've got one, our interpreter, we've translated her and adjusted her contract so that she could do contact tracing. She's been with us for 10, 15 years. She's been doing as much as she can, working seven days a week, but it's too much for her to handle. I'm doing some of them, but it's too much for me to handle plus my job. So we got to get more people out and it's not declining yet. We'll watch for the next two weeks. If in two weeks we start seeing a decline in this population, which happened in Yakima, then then we may not need PHI, but we'll kind of take it day by day to see how it goes.
Yeah, Lydia, this Kevin, real quick, I think I'm really happy with this strategy. I think PHI would make sense, as you said, if we're still surging here in a couple of weeks. But I think one of the things that I like about the track that you're taking right now is that it is more of a localized effort and response. These are folks that are familiar with the community that have connections here that we're we're familiar with from from years of our work in some cases. So I I think that'll be a benefit to us as we, you know, continue to have a more localized response. We might have a better response in the community.
Yeah, and I did have an outreach this weekend from a member of the community that has worked in the community in a professional way with our Spanish speaking population for years. For the 20 years I've been here, I've known her and she reached out to me to do some more resourcing and help with this population. So I'm hoping she'd be willing to volunteer to oversee more of our PR work through PIO to help get the right information out because there's still a lot of confusion out there. It's in it's in the entire population, not just this particular one, but it would be very helpful. So we're working on that this morning already.
With the statement you just made, this seems like an absolute necessity. I don't see where this is even can be questioned if we want to get ahead of this thing.
Oh, definitely. Yes.
You know, one of the things we found during this whole response is when you have a need, open as many pipelines as you can find because you think you have a great lead on something and that pipeline doesn't fill. So this is the same with we've tackled some of the other problems, open several pipelines and then use the one that fills first.
I like it. Okay, you guys are doing a great team. You know, kudos to to you all. Your nurses and everyone that's doing the the contact tracing. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. I'm also looking into processes for the weekend work. It's pretty exhausting. I'm pretty tired. I don't think I can do another one in a row working seven days straight or 19 days straight. So I'm trying to, I'm going to work with Dave on some ideas that I have. Because even though we hire these people, there will still need to be a public health department person doing some background things that have to happen over the weekend as cases come in to make them available to this group of people because they're not DOH people. So they don't, they can't access certain things that we can. So trying to set up a process for that this week as well because I go on vacation this next weekend for 10 days. So I've got to have it ready before I leave.
A well deserved vacation.
Thank you. Yes, I'm looking forward to it. I'm tired.
You come back when?
I come back on Monday, August. Yes, 17.
So Lydia will be coming back on the 17th. I leave the 19th. Less of a vacation on my part.
Yeah. Well, maybe you'll be able to put your cane away.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so I can, I can all work with HR then to get these these people for this temporary position onboarded ASAP. Plus I have one that's a contract position. I'm waiting back for their build in information so we can get them onboarded and that would give me three people. Hopefully before the end of this week that would start doing the telephone interviewing.
And those those positions do meet the CARES Act criteria?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I appreciate everything you guys doing on this. So it's so, so important.
Let's keep up the good work, guys. We're proud of you.
Thanks. That's all I got. Yes, that's all I've got.
Good, good. That works.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Coming back to our agenda. Let's move on to public works. Do we have them?
Looks like we got Loretta.
We do. All right, Loretta.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The crew's all here.
That works.
All right. So we've got several items this morning, commissioners, and a couple of discussion items relating to the solid waste contracts. And also our need to purchase a server. But we'll start off with our briefing items and Mike's going to kick it off with the franchise agreement. Not for the blue herring condo, but blue heron. To be confused.
I was wondering about that.
It's a condo we've got going.
This is an existing condominium association franchise application. They've applied for a franchise agreement with Mason County to cover their existing sewer transport line that was installed in the county right of ways back in the early 1970s. This line was located along the Or Noble Road and continues south to cross Dalby Road to their drain. So the system is in place. Again, it was established a long time ago. So we're we've we've approached them and said, hey, like you need to, you know, you need to get a franchise agreement to continue to be located here. So recommending the board to set a public hearing for August 25 to consider their approval of the franchise agreement in Mason County and the Blue Heron condominiums.
Supportive.
Sounds good.
Right. So one thing to note, commissioners, we have on there the date of August 25. And to do that, we would need to be able to be on the action agenda tomorrow. And I believe we sent down the action items, but we'll need to coordinate with Diane about that. And if not, we'll need to adjust our our hearing date.
Diane, can we add that to the agenda? Okay.
Thank you, Deidre. We're gonna have to give you a raise since you're running it all now.
Deidre, can you add it to the agenda? Just kidding.
I will talk to Diane about it this afternoon.
All right, thank you.
And I think we are but just wanted to flag that for you.
And if for some reason we we can't, is it, I mean, how time sensitive?
It's not a time sensitive issue since this has been hanging out there since 1970.
We're just getting around to it.
That's right. We appreciate Terry Connolly, our utility coordinator for when he has an opportunity to catch these, he follows right up on it. So.
Okay, if we're not able to put it on the agenda for tomorrow, would we be able to add it? Looks like our next one would be September 8. Would that, would that be too long?
I don't believe so, commissioners.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and just push it to the to September 8?
All right.
What do you do? Is that okay with you guys?
Fine with me.
All right, will do.
Great, thank you.
Next item we have is ecology block wall construction 16391 North Shore Road. Currently, there's an existing riprap wall at this this location that's failing. This is causing cracking along North Shore Road. Of course, there's a lot of locations that are cracking along North Shore Road. But we've been working with the property owner here for a couple of years about replacing that with an ecology block wall. So it will support the road and actually protect the property owner. The Alexanders. And so we worked out an agreement with Alexanders to partially pay for the structure. We're estimating it to be about $100,000 to to construct this wall and they've agreed to pay about $14,000 of that.
Are you meaning Anderson's or Alexander? You're saying Alexanders.
It's Alexander. There's a misprint in the
The thing I see it here. Okay.
We'll get that cleaned up. So what we're doing is we're looking to go out for bid for this. And the reason for this, I normally would always want to do these things in house. But right now we're we're working on our core pavement repair projects and chip seal program being set behind by the COVID month and a half off and and a couple culverts that we just recently did in August. We'd like to, this thing needs to get done and repair it. So we'd like to actually go out to bid for it and see what kind of of numbers we get and if they're reasonable numbers to to go ahead and award that. So we're recommending from the board to authorize the county engineer to sign the agreement with the Alexanders and then solicit bids and execute contract with contractor if if deemed necessary.
Agree.
Good with me.
Good with me too.
Thank you, commissioners. And a thanks to the prosecutor's office and working with us on the contract review and language.
They come in pretty handy, don't they?
Yes, they do.
Our third item is for Valley Rose Culvert Replacement Project. At the end of Valley Rose Road or Drive, there's been some flooding issues the last couple of years that we've been analyzing and trying to work with adjacent property owner to get repaired. We have come up with a design. We've got some permits to replace one cross culvert and install another one where the water was concentrated adjacent to the road. Again, I'd like to do these things in house, but with the, I'd like to keep the road crews focused on the road repairs and the chip seal program. So this would be a nice little project just to contract out and just off of our books and and take care of it. So we're requesting the board authorize us to use the whole work roster to contract out this work.
Good with me.
All right, great. Thank you, commissioners. Next up, we have a request to execute an interagency agreement with the state of Washington, the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And commissioners, you may recall some time ago, like several years ago, back in, I think, 2012, that there were some conversations with the Haven Lake community regarding lake levels and a desire to improve fisheries and prevent flooding in the winter or alleviate flooding and maintain some summer lake levels. And as a result of that, there were some meetings and communications with Fish and Wildlife. The county was assisting and facilitating some of those meetings. And the upshot was Fish and Wildlife developed a plan to remove the fishway structure and the outlet at the outlet of Haven Lake and construct or design a natural stream outlet essentially. So to do all of this work, Fish and Wildlife needs to access property that is owned by Mason County. And it's the parking lot and boat launch there at Haven Lake. And that was dedicated to the county as part of the the original flat. So what you have before you is an agreement that authorizes Fish and Wildlife and their contractors to be able to access and utilize that property to be able to construct this new roughened channel outlet from Haven Lake.
Just you know, Loretta, none of us were here in 2012.
What? This isn't part of your collective commissioner memory?
I support.
I like the term, there are no budget impacts for Mason County. So I support.
Thank you.
I concur.
Yeah, and I wish to thank Eric Schwartz, our environmental permit coordinator. He's been taking point on this. And he worked closely with Fish and Wildlife and again, our prosecutor's office to make sure that we are not accepting any responsive maintenance liabilities to make sure that we are not accepting any responsive maintenance liabilities or responsibilities and making sure we're well covered in that regard. And Eric's done a really nice job in coordinating. And again, thanks to the prosecutor's office. All right, next up is a contract for fire protection and emergency medical services for our public works facility. And this is a contract that we have with Mason County Fire District 11. And since we do not pay property taxes and a chunk of money goes directly to fire protection, this is the form of agreement that is executed to be able to pay for those fire and emergency medical services.
So there is no increase, correct?
That is correct. There is no increase.
Quick question.
Yep.
Question for you. Well, so we have a shop up in Belfair. Do we have similar agreements with Mason Fire? Also, I guess, you know, for for Frank, maybe even, I mean, do we do this for our other county properties? Or is this is this something that's unique to Public Works, your facility on 101?
That's a very good question, Commissioner. Kel, I had Kelly pull all of our agreements with our various fire departments. And so we're taking a look at all of those and and revamping and making sure everything's up to date. I don't believe we have an agreement, a formal agreement for protection services for the Belfair shop. But I do need to double check that. We also I also spoke with the chief regarding the agreement and apparently PUD 3 also has a similar fire protection agreement with Fire District 11. So certainly other entities are are having similar agreements.
Loretta?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not
Go ahead, Kevin. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but it's I'm just curious to see if this is an outlier and kind of understand it from that perspective. It's it's
Sure.
This was done before I I joined the commission in 17. So I just thought this is my first look at this. And so just kind of curious about about why at all.
Yes, we were curious as well, and we're doing as much research as we could. Commissioner Netherland, you had a question also.
Yeah, is this because we don't pay fire tax, EMS, et cetera, et cetera?
Correct, correct.
So this is basically you know, a replacement of what we're not paying.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I don't know if Frank has information about other county owned properties.
And just just to answer that question, I'm not aware of any contracts, but I will I will go in and take a go through a search. Have anything like this or similar.
What do we do for look for all our buildings that we have in downtown Shelton?
Yeah, exactly.
Right. And I think I mean, I totally get the I understand why Fire District 11 would want this, and I understand why we would be doing it. But it just, again, it seems like this might be the only one, and it just
Question, though.
So I would like to revise my position. A little bit this issue a little bit more. $6,400 isn't is it a ton of money in the grand scheme of things? However, it's a it's, I think, worth looking a little bit.
I would agree.
All right. All right, commissioners, we will come back at next briefing with that information.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last item that we have for our briefing is a special pay request. And this request is for to authorize temporary special pay for Morris for performing in a higher classification. And the reason we're asking for this is that Britta Creed, our senior accounting technician, is resigning and Britta's last day will be the end of this month. And that's going to be a loss for us. And I'm sure commissioners, you've you've had the opportunity to work with Britta as well. And so we're sad to hear her go. Michelle is enthusiastic, capable, competent, and ready to roll in being able to do some shadowing and learning and performing the responsibilities during the next month or so, in addition to her current responsibilities. And we've also advertised and posted for for Britta's replacement. So this should be a fairly short period of time for the temporary special pay request.
So you're saying that this will be probably about a month? Is that what I read?
I believe so, yes.
Frank, do you have any opinions on this? Do you see any issues with our policy? I don't, but I'm asking you.
No, and Loretta's already I've already signed.
Supportive.
And are in supportive.
All right. Thank you.
And Kevin, just so you know, I'm looking at the maps. It looks like it's just inside 11. It's close, though. That's a good question.
Thank you, Commissioner, for pulling that up. I was going to pull it up on my other laptop, but you you got it. Thank you.
Well, let me extend our our wishes to Britta as well.
Thank you, well, commissioners. Okay, moving on to discussion items. Our finance folks would be immensely grateful if we could go purchase a new server. They are experiencing a great deal of lag time bouncing information downtown to the downtown server and back here. And as you imagine, might imagine, that's frustrating under most circumstances, but even more so during this time period.
Loretta, because of the COVID situation, and sometimes you need to be able to work at home and work elsewhere, is there any possibility that this could be also helped because of the pandemic and used COVID monies? I guess that might be to Frank as well.
Okay, that's a good thought. It's it's a possibility. We certainly have funds budgeted for some capital replacement. I did talk with Ben who got some numbers and we're looking anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000. And that includes some software.
You actually save that, though, in your budget, too?
It doesn't specifically call out the server, but
Okay.
We've got we've got funds available.
Thank you.
In that line item.
To to answer your question regarding availability of CARES funding, if it facilitates and assists in teleworking, then yes, it would be CARES fund capable for reimbursement.
Thank you.
Well, I would support getting the the new server. I'd like to know where exactly the money would be coming from, though.
Okay.
I agree with that.
All right. And then the next items, commissioners, are the recycling contracts. And we will be following up on this. We had prepared to have a briefing item for you to, well, I'll back up. We have two contracts that are due to be reevaluated, our recycle hall and our solid waste hauling contracts. And we began discussions with Mason County Garbage some months ago and were presented with a recycle contract that had significant cost increase. And as a result, we were looking at internalizing potentially the hauling. And commissioners directed us to take a look at that and see what it would take to internalize both of those hauling contracts. And we've been focused on and working on that for the last two or three months. And we've had some assistance from our engineering side, taking a look at what capital costs and capital improvements would be needed out at the the Eels Hill facility. And also taking a look at not only what costs are associated with internalizing our hauls, but what costs need, what we need to invest in the facility overall to make long term improvements to the Eels Hill facility. So that's been the work to date. And we're planning to bring that back out here at the end of the month and follow up with all of the information that we have available for commissioners at that time. Our briefing will talk about long term capital improvements to the solid waste facility, improvements that would be necessary if we were to implement internalizing our hauling contracts and what that looks in terms of a rate scenario and overall cost. We will not be able to implement any types of improvements immediately because there are significant financial investments necessary, and it just simply takes time to make those improvements.
Loretta, what would be, you know, like, let's perfect, perfect case scenario here. First off, I just want to state I'm completely supportive of moving operations in house as we've been discussing. I think I think there's that's the right direction for the county to go long term. But perfect work, perfect case scenario, if we wanted to make that adjustment, how long would it take in order for us to make that happen to get everything up and running?
The well, there's it's a two part issue. One is to have the finances in place to make that investment and the rate structure in place to be able to pay off whatever debt is incurred for the improvements. So that's one piece. And then the second piece is the physical contracting to make those improvements. So there's a design and construction aspect to to the improvements. And that would be at least a year in my estimation and probably a two year cycle at least.
Loretta, can I ask you to put together something for us that does a breakdown of the cost for the improvements, not just at Eels Hill, but also at the Belfair Station and offset what that would look like if we were to expend out the money bonded out or whatever we're looking for for options and what that payment amount would be and what the offset would look like from this the in house that no more, you know, taking our waste outside of the county and keeping it internal. There was some cost savings or some some financial benefits by doing that. Could we put those together, look at how much is coming in, what that would look like for payments out for bonds and how much that would buy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, that on the finance committee side, there's been some initial inquiries there. And and thank you to the finance committee for and Commissioner Shutey, Frank, for initiating that conversation as well.
So is that something that you think we could revisit by the end of this month? Is that something that we need to revisit in September? What's a, you know, I mean, we've kind of gotten a little bit jammed up on this for a while. And I think we've, you know, it's been difficult to kind of you know, just nail things down. So what I mean, what's a realistic timeline for you to come back to us with? You know, with with the with a structured plan that we could we could really consider and maybe take action on?
I believe we could have preliminary numbers by the briefing at the end of the month. Whether or not that is adequate for a commission to take action on, I'd be hesitant to say that because they will be preliminary planning numbers. And Richard's here as well, and he can jump in and strangle me and say, you're over committing, Swanson.
About right.
Right. And one of those contracts up that we're under the gun on.
The first contract expired the 31st of July. So that's the haul agreement. And the recycle agreement expires the end of this month. And originally, when those contracts were executed, oh, what? At least two years ago, I believe it was the intent of Bart at that time to go out for an RFP for both haul agreements at the same time.
Those increases were pretty substantial, weren't they?
So that's what triggered, and thank you, Commissioner Trask, for pointing that out. That's what triggered our initial look at how can we internalize this? We received a draft of the recycle contract that had very significant increases. And we were like, whoa, okay, this this we cannot afford. We really need to take a look at how we can do this internally. And since that time, Mason County Garbage came back and said, oops, we had a blow in our calculation here. And this is not the draft and submitted a revised draft that is much more in line and actually a very much more favorable contract for the county.
You and I had talked about a possible extension, short term, at the exact same rate. How did that work out?
So we have not followed up with Mason County Garbage at this point to do that. We wanted to talk with commissioners. But yes, we can. That would be a desirable while we put out an RFP and while we sort out the the cost to internalize.
While remembering that an extension is only in time only, and if there's any any substantial change or or change in the actual values, that's not an extension?
Correct.
So are you suggesting an extension at the current with the current?
It was gonna look, she was gonna look into that to see about a short term, because I'm not interested much personally, but it's up to the whole commission for long term. But a short term at the exact same rate to make sure everything is still covered temporarily.
Yeah, I would be, I would be, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
I was just gonna say, I would be amenable to that, but, you know, I don't want to lose sight of, you know, how important I think it is for us to continue down the path that we've been going down to internalize this. I know, I know that's going to take a lot of heavy lifting, but our, our solid waste side is one that I, I think has been, I don't want to say neglected, but it's, it's certainly been an afterthought in many, in many of the decisions that we've been making for, for years and years. And I think we have an opportunity right now to, you know, really change course on that. And so I, I think any short-term agreement has to, has to coincide with us continuing down the path that we're on and making those decisions as well.
I agree with you, Commissioner. We have the right people, the right place at the right time. And we're putting things together in a way that I'd sure like to see us follow that trail all the way through to see what the end product looks like.
Right, I would have to agree with that as well. I think now's, now's our opportunity, so let's jump on it.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Richard, anything to add or questions on?
No, I think that's, it probably won't take us that long. We've got a lot of the background work already in place. So it, it won't take, it's not that much of a deal for us to continue down this path.
So our next meeting, next briefing is the 24th. Is that a possibility?
It is a possibility.
And if it's looking like it isn't, you know, I mean, just communicate that, us between, you know, now and then, so that we're aware. You know, just really want to make sure we keep things moving.
Yep.
Commissioners.
And I, we appreciate you being aware and supportive of, of what the commission has been asking on this. Loretta, thank you for keeping up on it.
Oh, well, and Richard and Zach as well. They've been all over it.
You've got a great team out there.
Yes, we do. Much appreciated. All right, so that is it on our end, commissioners. Got also, I, I thank you for forwarding the letter regarding Island Lake. So we're, we're chewing on that and thinking about what options, additional options we have there. Any, any thoughts or guidance on your end, commissioners, on that?
Oh, I value your opinions.
All right, Dave's been, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a couple of really quick thoughts on that. I know, I know Justin and a couple of other folks have been, you know, really kind of after it, and I know that they appreciate the, the speed signs that we just had installed over there. My, my concerns are still there about making any kind of permanent roadway changes. I, I don't that go beyond some of that. I would like to see us, Loretta, either through you or Mike, continue to, continue to ask for enforcement from the sheriff's office in, as a, as a compliment to the, to the speed signs. You know, Chief, Chief Spurling always does a really good job of explaining the three Es of traffic safety, education, enforcement, and engineering. It's kind of a hierarchy. And so I think the speed signs are there, are educating the, the drivers. And I would like to see a better emphasis on enforcement in the short term, as we see what's working, before we make wholesale changes to the roadway.
Thank you. The only thing that jumped to my mind potentially, I know that Justin mentioned that students were walking to school, so that's something we could potentially investigate as a future Safe Route to Schools grant application, possibly. And that, what that would do would allow us to find some funds to construct either a pedestrian pathway or a sidewalk. But as you know, commissioners, we are really constrained in space there. And we've got environmental concerns for widening. It's, it's just difficult. So Commissioner Shutey, you're right on point about focusing on the education and enforcement aspects, because anything structural there is going to be a real challenge.
Loretta, last I heard, a year or so ago, in order for us to do those Safe Route to Schools money, we have to do some code adjustments. So might want to look at those earlier and bring those to us first.
Sure. I, I'm not sure about the code adjustments. I do know what is required is that there needs to be a walking plan from the school district. And that's been the challenge for us in the past. We could go out and round up money, but the schools themselves need to have an adopted plan.
Yes, but ask the PRTPO, because there was some requirements from us too. That's why counties weren't using that money much. Cities were, because we adapt those codes. We need to be proactive and look and see what those are, see if it's something we can still do.
Okay.
I'm open to it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Are you done, Loretta? I, I've got stuff for you.
Yep.
Okay, Madam Charity, mind?
Oh, go for it.
Okay. So, Loretta, the first thing on my list, I guess, would be the sign that was spelled wrong?
Yes.
Where are we at on that?
I believe that has been corrected.
Okay.
They found three in the segment that needed to be corrected.
Good deal. Makes us look bad when they put up a brand-new sign and we spell the road wrong. The painting of that, that end strip on Bear Creek Road.
That also, I believe, was completed, but I will double-check that one. The stop bar.
Yes, the stop bar. I couldn't see what it was called.
Yeah.
Also, I don't know that you're gonna have the answer to it yet, but I had brought up to you before, we have all that, those rocks from the construction that were just all over the place, going up Highway 3. And, you know, perhaps maybe we can get somebody in there to clean, especially with the gutters and stuff now, and, and sidewalks, it doesn't have anywhere to go. So it just collects and goes on the road and back on the road, back on the road. And the other aspect of going up out of that hill is remembering that somehow, right in the middle of our UGA, or right towards the end of our UGA, we are going from 35 to 50, back down to 35, and then a traffic circle.
Right.
It's creating a problem. So have you had a chance to contact anybody on either the rocks or the miles per hour going up out of town?
So the rocks, I had Amy fill out a, or contact DOT Maintenance to put in a request to get that taken care of. And regarding the speed limit, Dave was on vacation last week, but he will follow up on that this week.
No problem. And the last ones, I know we tried to fix the candle, but I heard we only put one out there. I take it we've got that fixed since then on Clifton Road?
We only have one.
One candle was damaged.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I thought, I thought there were several that were gone and that we put down one.
Oh, okay.
That's what people were talking about. And then the last thing is that solid waste container collecting the papers up there into Huya. Do you remember that conversation?
I do.
Have we been able to do anything?
I will follow up with Wendy with environmental health on that.
Yeah, please do. And, you know, the company, again, if they're not in business, you know, this whole situation is, is not good.
Yeah. So what would the community like to see?
They want it gone. They're tired of picking up, it's, it's stuffed to the brim. And they're tired of picking up everything, and then people are dropping off solid waste around it, and they're going to cleaning it up all the time.
Okay.
Including tires, batteries, and paint.
Okay, so they're wanting the recycle box gone?
Yeah, I'd be happy just to see it emptied, but if the company's not there, and the stuff is coming out, the, the tops now.
Right.
Have to do something. I worry that some kids is gonna get hurt in there or something, too.
Yeah. How frequently, when you brought this to our attention, that was two weeks ago, correct? And then the community emptied it. How, I guess, my question, how frequently is that thing filling up?
The community didn't empty it.
They just cleaned up the stuff around it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's never been empty?
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, that's the problem. It is absolutely filled to the brim, and it's filled with trash and stuff, too. The papers, but, you know, they're picking up tires, batteries, paint.
Yeah, okay. Alrighty.
And I, I've reached out to the company several times. I've looked them up, and I got you guys, I think, that same information. It looks like they were closed by action of the state.
Yes.
And so has a couple of their other LLCs that they're dealing with. So no matter what, we have a solid waste issue that is sitting there at the end of a road, right, right on that, that main road going into Huya.
Yeah.
Not pretty. Now, have you checked the, the actual width of the right-of-way there? Because it's in the maintained area.
Okay. Yeah, it, it appeared to be outside, but we will check that, and if there's a
It was outside one of the, the power poles, but it's a maintained area. So it makes me wonder if, if it's still in ours, if we could double-check that.
Okay.
That's all I have, which is plenty.
All right.
Commissioner Shutey, do you have anything?
Yeah, a couple, just real quick. Loretta, I had heard that there was talk of being able to chip seal the public road, or public works portion of the Union Boat Launch. As, have you, can you confirm that for me, and maybe walk me through what the thought is there?
Yeah, so I did have a very brief conversation with Ross regarding that. And Alan's ready and willing and able to, to do that work. We want to make sure that we don't have any water quality concerns, and we need to take a look at drainage in particular. But certainly, the property is Mason County property. It's considered a road, if you will, for a portion of it. So there's not an issue with our expending road fund dollars to do that work. I think at one time, Ross was thinking perhaps that needed to come out of Parks budget, but it does not. It's a road fund expenditure. But what we need to do to make that happen is take a look at, at drainage, and I'll kick it over to Mike real quick to add anything else he may have.
Yeah, that, that would be the first thing to come in and do a little survey work to analyze where the drainage is going and get any kind of permits from either DCD or DOE and, and stuff. So we, we want to make sure we're doing it right. I would probably suggest, in that sense, probably just going ahead and pre-leveling with asphalt and putting on a little more of a structural road improvement there. And that way you can really slope your drainage to any catch basin or, or, or control area that you want to do. It'll be, it'd be a cleaner product and a long, longer-term product in, in the end there.
Wow. How much, what, what, what's the cost difference? Is this something we can do in-house?
Yes, absolutely.
I like that idea a lot better, Commissioner, that it's such a small road. It can't be that much of a cost difference. I'm sure we could support it. The only thing I worry about is that we do it sooner rather than later, because we don't want to get into too far out into the year when the weather starts changing.
Yeah, agreed. So what, Mike, what would be a, what would be a realistic timeline on potentially doing that work? At least on the preliminary side, and then figuring out the rest?
We can get some data started this week with survey and come up with the plan and work with Eric on permit-wise and see if there's any, what, what type of drainage or what infiltration, you know, we might have to have onsite to control that runoff. We come up with a plan by the end of the month and, and pave it, you know, do the, do the project in September.
Okay. I think that'd be great.
I'm not telling you.
I
Day in September.
I appreciate that. And then the second question that I had was, we had a lot of conversations last year with TICCAP. And I believe they included it either in this, in this year or the sixth year, but the gravel road improvement pilot work, like, I'm gonna call it that. Is that work that is intended to happen this year? Or is that in, in the tip for next year? And, and either way, what's the, what's kind of the status and where are the, where are we planning to start that work?
Good question, Commissioner. Very timely, given budget, and putting together our six-year and annual.
Yes, we've, with the information we've had, we picked three different roads. The combination of the three roads is about 1.2 miles. One is Sunny Slope Road, which is a half, a half-mile long, and it's it's a connector point between Mason Lake and East Mason Lake, is it, Rowan? So what, what we're planning on doing is we've, we've actually put these in the annual construction program and on the six-year program to be performed next year. By county forces work, we'll end up widening the shoulders, fixing any drainage, we'll regrade the existing surface and add some material, and then perform chip seal, a double shot on it. And that'll convert it over into our chip seal road and, and completely maintained by the county from there on. So that's Sunny Slope. And then Boyer Road is another one that's got a half-mile section that comes off of Shelton Matlock. The end of the road is actually chip sealed already near the houses, but this, this section will be fairly easy to take care of. And then Snyder Road, Snyder Road is over near Arcadia. And it, it's a short section of road, about 950 feet long of gravel surface. But it's one of our most complained about roads for potholes and such, for a little community that's been there. And so we're, we actually don't have right-of-way on this road. And so what we're gonna do is, is work with the community about saying, okay, if you want us to upgrade this, you have to dedicate some right-of-way for us to, to make the improvements. On that particular road, we plan on, the proposal is to actually pave it, since it's such a short area, that it'd be just near as efficient to go ahead and put a two-inch overlay on that road, on that section, instead of gearing up for a chip seal operation.
On the very beginning section.
Beginning section.
Off of Arcadia, not the entire length of the road.
Just 950 feet. Yeah, just the gravel section in front.
So, and we've got some other roads that we've been looking at and considering, commissioners. Sunnyside's another that we frequently hear from folks, Kelly Hall. We've got, we have no lack of opportunities. And so what we will be doing is presenting some options to TICCAP this month. Taking some input from them, so they can make recommendations to commissioners. And commissioners, I know you'll have some ideas about priorities also, that will, will have some options for you. So that's our game plan. We had in our tip this year that we would develop the plan, essentially, which is what we've done. And that we would begin implementing and constructing in 2021.
Yeah, we can, and we can be less aggressive, or we can be more aggressive on this. If we can, we need, commissioners want to bump it up to, you know, five miles, we can do that, or we can shorten, you know. These roads are fairly, the ones that we picked out are fairly, you know, fairly easy to, to knock off. And so we're looking at it from that standpoint to start the program.
Great. I really appreciate the updates on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have anything at this time.
We did have that meeting out on Agate, and there were a couple of roads that are being put in, and I will get you those addresses today.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner.
Do we have anything else?
I owe you information also. I'm sorry, on the the build grant. Commissioner Shu, the ass last briefing, what the timing was on that, and I I will send you some details. But it is an annual grant, and applications are due in March. But I'll I'll summarize what the the key components or requirements are for the the grant application and send that out.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anything else? All right, before we move into our next scheduled briefing from Support Services, we're gonna take a quick, what do you say, seven, five-minute, five or seven-minute break?
Can we do six and a half?
Now you're pushing it.
I got the clock going.
All right, we'll see you back here in seven minutes. Moving to our Support Services briefing, real quickly, we'll go around the the Zoom room. We've got Patty McGuire, Commissioner Netherlands, Commissioner Stewie, Frank Pinter, Kelly Frazier, Ross McDowell, Patty McLean, Jennifer Byerly, and Looks Like Don.
Thank, thank you, Commissioners. Our first item on our agenda is the appointment to area aging as an aging advisory board member. Is Diane there yet?
Yes, I'm back.
Okay.
So you had a resignation on that board, and then Karen Wolf has applied to serve. So I wanted to know if the board's good with appointing Karen Wolf.
I am good with appointing Karen.
You know her, Commissioner?
I know of her, how about that? And I think that she would be a good fit. I mean, we could always ask her if she would like to.
That's good enough for me. If you if you're aware of her and you have, you know, and there's only one applicant, I'm good. If we didn't know who she was, I would always rather have it. I'm comfortable.
Okay.
Amy, here.
Then the next item is the presentation of the budget. Diane?
Basically, you know, every other week after missing these next two weeks. So I don't have a commission schedule, a commission meeting scheduled on Tuesday, September 1st. And that's when the auditor will be presenting the 2021 budget. It doesn't have to be done in a commission meeting. And at Audit Committee, we did talk with Leo about it could be presented by the Auditor's Office via a news release, and then it just gets posted on our website. And I wanted to know if the board's good with that, or do you want to schedule a meeting on September 1st?
I, I would like to make sure that we let the public. So what's the, what's the best way to let our public know or get a view?
Well, it'll be, I mean, obviously, we're probably not going to be in person, even if we schedule. And so what has happened the last few years is the auditor does a really brief presentation, summarizes where the fund amounts are, and then it gets posted on the website.
And literally, that's all that occurs. It's just a transfer, they walk up, they hand it to us, and that's that.
You're gonna, Commissioner, yes, you're gonna, you're gonna miss out on me saying, here it is.
Yeah.
I, I, no, I will, I'll just say, and I think it's, I think it's fine to post online, post on social media. I think that would be, that would be fine, and just kind of do a press release or whatever, or a release, if that's what you were considering doing. It's gonna have a similar effect as if we had a special meeting to do it.
I'm good.
Okay, so I won't, I won't schedule a meeting, and we'll just plan to make sure work gets out with a news release. And then, like I said, the Office then will post it online.
Sounds good.
Thank you for all that hard work, Patty.
Sorry, sorry that you won't have your moment.
Maybe next year.
Let's hope.
We'll give you twice as much time on the agenda next year, Patty.
The the next item is the appointment to the Board of Equalization.
Good morning, Commissioners. We had two applications for two open positions. One position is Kevin Frankie Burger, and he has reapplied for his regular board member position. And then we had an alternate board member, Kim Wilson, who said that she is not seeking reappointment for this next term. And we had an application come in from Brenda Hershey for an an open position, too. So we're looking to fill an alternate and a regular board member position. And we have two applicants. I wasn't sure if you wanted to interview them or move it forward with appointment.
You said two applicants?
Yes.
For two positions or two applicants for one position?
Two applicants for two positions. One of them is a regular board member and one is an alternate board member.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I have an opinion on Kevin Frankie Burger has been there quite a while, but he also represents a specific part of our community in all these meetings that he that he attends it as a part of. So I could definitely see reappointing him, and I definitely know who Brenda Hershey is. And if there's only one applicant and one position open, I have no issue with issuing it to her. The only other option would be to go back out again.
I I don't have any, I don't have any real I don't have any real concern with that. The one thing I would point out, I assume these numbers directly to the left of the current members' names are the Commissioner District that they're in. And I would just note that this is one of the, this is probably one of the only committees where we are almost exclusively represented by folks from my Commissioner District, District 2. Not that I'm saying that should weigh into the calculus on this, but it's something I think we need to be mindful of for the Board of Equalization going forward is getting equal representation from other parts of the county.
I don't have that sheet, so I, that's not in here with my stuff. So I didn't even realize that. I'm glad you picked that up. I'm still comfortable with with now, but I I agree, I would love to see us be more proactive to make sure that that we get equal representation or some type of spread out representation in the future.
Yeah, so the way it is now, we have one person from District 1, and the rest are all from District 2. This would not, these appointments would not change that, and so we don't have any, any folks from District 3 in there. So just.
What, when is the expiration, the next expiration date coming up? Can you see?
There, it looks like the the next expiration would be 2021, May.
At that time, we could submit for looking for somebody from a specific district.
I'm comfortable with that. I'd hate to leave us short.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
It, just also Carl Soper, who's listed as an alternate on here, who's who's on the board until 2022, did he have any interest in moving to a regular position?
No, he didn't reapply his.
Okay.
I'm comfortable moving forward.
And it looks like we just appointed Carl in June. Or he reapplied in June.
Need to check on that, because I think that date is wrong with Carl. Sorry. Because it was my understanding, Kim Wilson and Kevin were the only two up in June. So I think that's a typo on Carl. He was just appointed last year, and that was a brand new second alternate position.
I remember that.
And I think that goes to 2021.
2022, his appointment was June of 20.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. They're all good. You just have the two.
Okay.
And then the next appointment date or the expiration date, May 31st of 2021. And if, so do we need to change the requirements? Or do anything so that we can make sure that there's equal representation from all three districts?
Well, how we've done it in the past is, we do need to do a verbiage change, but it's something along the lines of we will endeavor to, not require, but endeavor to to find equal representation. So we'll give first priority to that, but if nobody else applies, you know, especially after going out twice, we have to be able to accept what we can.
And we could put that into the news announcement.
I think you said you'd be good with it. You're, I I now know what I sounded like every time I was in this office. My apologies to everybody before they hardwired me in here.
All right, I'm good with that.
Is that moving forward with Kevin Frankie Burger being the regular member and Brenda Hershey being the alternate?
I would agree.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll move those forward.
Okay, then we have Ross with our next item, which is an EMPG grant.
Good morning, Commissioners and everybody. What I have here is the FY20 Emergency Management Performance Grant Supplemental. They gave us a supplemental of $14,144 that to work on stuff for COVID through the EMPG. What we're looking at using the fundings for on this is to help support the payment of our part-time person that we have, actually a temporary full-time person that we have here at DEM, Will, who was going, he's working on the SCOOP planning and COG. We have a, we have a draft of the COG, but he's working on SCOOP planning with the different departments. He's called out and reached out to almost all the departments. He's received, I believe, five, five groups. He's done, looked through their COG plan, I'm sorry, their SCOOP plan. But he's gonna continue on with this as part of his duties besides the other duties that he's doing here in the area command. So we're requesting that approval for me to sign the, sign the supplemental grant. It's just a one signature is all that's needed. So if we could put that on to our next, oh, let's see, August 25th. If we can put it on to that meeting date to get an approval.
I'm good.
Yep.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you very much, guys. Thanks.
Okay, moving on, Jennifer has a client partnership program.
Thank you, Frank. Good morning, Commissioners. So Mason County participates in the PACE program with Munis, which is basically continuing education on the modules that we own. And this year, we did a lot of training on cubes reporting, which is like pivot table reporting out of Munis, SSRS reporting, which is even more in-depth than than the pivot table reporting, position control or position tracking. You know, just learning how to utilize our system better. And we got a lot out of it, and Munis thought so as well, because they have nominated Mason County to be on the Level 2, the accelerated partnership level, which basically means that we would get a little more access to them at no charge, and they would have access to to Mason County in helping to promote Munis to other clients. And so what they're asking us to do is sign this agreement, basically stating that, you know, we'll join in this partnership and and work together, and either one of us can dissolve it at any time. Again, there's, there's no additional charge for doing it. And eventually, if if we if we work together well enough, we have the opportunity to get our PACE training for free, completely for free, which would be awesome. But I I think it's a great opportunity. The Audit Committee has reviewed it and recommends that the county enter into the agreement. And so I'm asking for permission to place on the August 25th action agenda for the chair to sign the the client partnership agreement.
Uh, in the Audit Committee, she said this came up, and it was, it's it's very well written in a way that we are very much protected. The questions that came out were, were staff willing to do this, were they willing to do that? If not, what would that look like? And literally, the only thing that happens if we decide we don't want to play anymore, we just go back to our original agreement with no penalties, no nothing. So it's nothing but an upside, and everybody seemed willing to give it a shot. That's what I remember. Is that what you heard, Patty? Patty McGuire, you were there. Is that, is, is, did I say that accurately?
Sorry, I was muted. I was, I was frantically looking for the unmute button. Yes, that's, that is my recollection.
Great. So if there's no other questions, then are you good with moving that that on to the agenda for the 25th? Perfect.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I know. I've spoken to Jennifer and even sometimes during those trainings, and she said that they are so valuable, so I'm absolutely supportive.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item we have is a notification that the General Services Teamsters Union accepted and voted and approved a contract last week. And I'd like to ask permission to put it on the action agenda for tomorrow so that we can move forward and start processing the revision and retro payments.
I'm in favor, Frank. Please do, and please make sure you give a pat on the back for all staff and everybody that was involved in that.
Absolutely. I already have. It was a long, but productive process.
I'm good.
Supportive as well. Just one question, Frank, if you could just maybe give a quick overview of the financials of it.
The, the contract is effective January 1 of 2019. The 2019 across-the-board increase is 1 and 1/2%. The 2020 across-the-board increase is 1 and 3/4%, and the 2021 is at 2%. The medical is comparable to all of the other contracts that the county has signed with. And the retro goes back to July of 2019.
Thank you.
Next item is a request to surplus a certain parcel of property. There was an offer made on a parcel of property that the county owns. It's in Neeland Plaza, behind the O'Reilly Auto Parts Store. There's an easement on that parcel for. There's an easement on that parcel for a. Water retention pond as well as electrical easements. However, when I spoke with the assessor, uh, assessor's office trying to match up our documentation. There was a question of how much and how large that parcel is and whether there's contiguous parcels that are attached. So at this point in time, I'm not putting that forward, just giving the boards a heads up that there will be a request. To put a number of tax title parcels as well as possibly this parcel. As a request for surplusing them and then authority to go ahead and put them on the. Annual bid for assets at the, in the tail end of the third quarter or more likely into the fourth quarter. So no action, just giving the board some information and we will come back forward with additional. Property listings for surplus.
Frank, I don't have any of that in my folder at all. Did you say that there was somebody that was interested in purchasing it at this time?
They made an offer on it, yes. But because it's not surplus, we can't.
Yeah, can you send me all that stuff, please? Have we had an appraisal done of that property?
No, that would be part of the process.
Thank you.
And that's one of the big questions is how much is the property appraised for and so forth. Next item, CARES Act funding and the update on the CARES Act funding. So I included in the packet a. Distribution or allocation of where we currently stand with CARES Act. Dollars. And I just wanted to read through that so that. I can garner acceptance by the board of where we are moving forward with dollars. As well as what has been added to that list. So starting off with what's been added, we included two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for rent. For the county by the use of the courts. For particularly Superior Court of Building Ten for oversized. Courtroom facilities in our new, in our new building. I've also been asked to assign three hundred thousand dollars to utilities. For assistance in residential customers for delinquent utility payments. I've also been asked by Public Health to allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For contract tracing subcontract. That's kind of what Lydia was referring to. In their briefing. So those were the three new items. Just to follow up on the other items that we had opened, we had the facilities contract for. The oversized courtrooms in Building Ten. Of two million seven hundred and fifty-four thousand. A hundred, one million six hundred and seventy-seven would be paid for out of REIT. And one million seventy-seven thousand would be paid for out of CARES Act funds. So far, we've spent a two, five hundred and eighty-three thousand in payroll. That would be recoverable under either FEMA or CARES Act. And CARES Act can be used to match the twelve and a half percent. County component of FEMA reimbursable salaries. So either, most of that will be recovered. If not through FEMA, then it would be recovered through CARES Act. We have three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth of expenditures. The county has already spent towards COVID-related. Items. Two hundred and sixty thousand of that is going to be reimbursed via FEMA. Forty-two thousand is going to be reimbursed through other state and federal grants. And forty-three thousand will be reimbursed through CARES. We have an additional eighty thousand dollars of public health. Requests from the Health Department for COVID-related mitigating PPE and things of that nature. We have from IT, we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of telework network upgrades. Fifty thousand of worth of telework server. Twelve thousand for Zoom networking. Five thousand for Building Ten networking and connecting the oversized courts to our current. Network. Ten thousand for IT staff to implement teleworking improvements. Sorry. Yes, and then twenty-five thousand for staffing implementation for. The network and telework servers. We have fifty thousand for additional medical supplies. Through the October timeframe. That would be for cleaning supplies, the cleaning service. There's a, um, a service that goes around the county wiping down all of the, um, all of the. Common areas. We have an additional fifty thousand for future purchases of COVID-related. PPE and medical equipment. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a full touchless body scanner. For the jail so that their corrections officers don't have to. Physically. Search. Individuals coming into jail. This can be done through a full body scan. An additional two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of scanners for the Building Ten. Expansion for the courts. Seventy thousand dollars for JAVs, which is the. Interconnectivity the courts use within their. Department for tele and video communication with the jail. This would be for the expansion into Building Ten. Seventy thousand for Superior Court and fifty thousand for District Court. Another, uh, three hundred thousand, actually three hundred and twenty-five thousand that was approved last week. Three hundred thousand for economic support to businesses locally that have been impacted by COVID. And then twenty-five thousand dollars support to the EDC to distribute those funds. To local businesses. Having identified all of that, that still leaves seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars available. For COVID-related CARES Act dollars that have not been allocated at this point.
Frank, have we agreed on all those things?
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah. Cause you know, I don't know, I'd like to focus on the stuff that's definitely ours and the things we need to take care of for ourselves here. With this county, with this money that is allocated to the county for those purposes. You know, the things on the JAVs, the body scans, all like that. I, I, I'm, I am fully supportive of all the medical. That contact tracing is an absolute, this what, specifically what it was made for. You know, uh. The EDC, that money, of course, was very important. I'd like for us to look at our budget, though, of increasing theirs this year because. Of how important they've turned out to be. And I have a feeling this is going to be a long-term situation, not a short one. So any other increases in the future might be looked at through our budget, uh, regular budget. When it comes to, uh, keeping money available for our businesses, I think that's extremely important. Everything the governor is doing right now is doing another ripple effect through our communities. And it's creating a situation where they're trying to stay open, but it's, they may not be able to. And the governor can take it away at any given moment. So I know that from the phone calls, some of these places are not stocking up because they're afraid they're going to stock up and it's all gone. That it's just taken and they have to throw it out. And that's not a good way to do business. And so they're still trying to figure out what to do. So I like the idea of keeping money available for these businesses, but I hope we also will take into consideration some of the things that. We don't think of as businesses, but they are fraternal organizations, for example, Eagles Club. They are closed down, but they had staff, they had a lot of things that were going on there, but they're not considered a true business. But they serve food. They've had a lot of different things that were going on there. They're just cut off right now because fraternal organizations were not included. In the rest, the, the regulations. But yet they did all the same thing. So that's my two cents on the issue. I'd like to go through specifically when the time comes and decide what we're going to spend exactly.
Yep. So the, the only thing that so far has been approved is the three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Today, we're going to talk a little more about the improvements to Building Ten. We have some proposals that have been put out and quotes on the project. There was a request put forward by PUD three for certain dollars. The, the, what was included in our list was three hundred thousand. That is not identified for any utility except to say that it's an item that might be. Available for assistance to residential customers. Again, reminding you that there is six, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand still available. That has not been allocated. On the one hand, on the other hand, this needs to be spent by October thirty-first.
Yeah. And I'd like to go into the businesses. One other thing that Commissioner Shude brought up, and I hope we haven't forgotten. You know, I appreciate the PUD and their issues, but Commissioner Shude brought up our own. Again, county funds to look at some of the county issues. He asked us to look at our sewer customers, our water customers. And see which ones, uh. Might need our internal help.
And we are putting that communication line out.
Commissioner, Evan, I appreciate you bringing that up. Would that fall under the one hundred to three hundred thousand? You have earmarks there for utility relief.
Correct.
You know, and I, I, you know, I'll just, I'll just say this since we're, we're talking about it. I think at the moment, we need to be very cautious. Because I, you know, our numbers locally are surging as Commissioner Netherman pointed out. You know, there's a lot of uncertainty as we head into the fall. You know, I think, I think we need to be cautious with how we distribute some of the remaining dollars so that we're able to meet. You know, the needs that come up in the fall. And so I think when it comes to the utilities, I saw the information from PUD one, from PUD three. What I'd be most interested doing is supporting the customers who are in, uh, who are delinquent. In status since the beginning of the COVID crisis and, and starting there before. Considering some of the other requests that, that in particular PUD three has made. I, I, I'm really interested also in the Wi-Fi hotspots, but I know that they've received. A lot of funding from Commerce and I know that, and it wasn't really clear in what they had provided to us. How much other money they have received. And so, um, you know, for the moment, I would be most interested in taking care of the customers. Who are having trouble making their bills before we got into funding any of these other things that have been requested.
And Karen Leaf shared with me some more grants that they have an opportunity of. I'd like to see if they're taking advantage of them. Before we go with the monies that we're responsible for. Karen Leaf of the EDC, I should have said, sorry.
Yeah.
And I do know that there's more federal monies coming down to help with that because it's a, it's not just a Washington state issue. It's a, it's a. National. And so I do know that monies are coming down. In fact, Public Works, um, the, they have more grants available. So it's, but I, I agree. I would rather help with. The bills, you know, helping them keep their electricity turned on.
Okay.
Than doing anything other or anything else unless we do have the money to help, but.
Commissioners, this is Ross. I just received the Community Development Block Grant is now available for rural areas. That is just popped up here. It looks like September is when it goes through September third for the applications. So I don't know if we want to get in on that or not. That might be something to look into.
Yeah, we want to get in on every opportunity we have.
Yeah, that's for a hundred and forty-three, forty-two thousand dollars worth of funding. And I have the application and we'll be bringing it forward before the third.
You know, we have other outstanding things we don't even talk about. We, you know, we thought we were going to get money for rental assistance, but the truth of the matter is. It's not for rental assistance at all. It's for rental assistance for those who actually have COVID and can't commit. Instead of those that couldn't get any work or anything. If we're going to look at anything else, especially with extra monies, we might want to consider things like that. Commissioner Shude and Commissioner Trask, I'd like to ask you to, to contact your, your really good connection friends. When it comes to that money again that they're holding back, they're not only holding back our, uh, the county money, they're also holding back the school districts as well. And if you could do a simple request to allow, to ask them to allow that transportation money as they used last year to be used for. For food deliveries, it will stop a huge layoff that's occurring right now. And with these layoffs, all these employees are going off of their insurance and everything instead of it being, uh, you know, a furlough. But that's only because the state has said at this moment, they can't do like they did last year and use those transportation dollars. For sending out food to the, the kids. Until the rest of the state all decides they're not going to start in the beginning, then they will. But for right now, they're being laid off. You're going to end up with a bunch of people. Trying to find a job elsewhere and won't be there to come back when we do need them. So I'd like to ask you both on the same issue to please call your direct connections. And see if you can help me kick that and break that loose a little bit.
Trust me in the fact that, that WASEC is on top of this as well, where it's a very high priority for the entire state.
Isn't it wonderful how they always decide they'll hold back our money for our protection?
Always. Tickle me pink.
So. Um, so then I'll continue moving with this list. And as things come forward that we're going to commit to. I will ask for permission. Uh, the IT component is one that we really need to act on. At this point in time, if that's okay to continue moving forward with.
I'm supportive.
Same.
Very.
And then we'll talk about Building Ten.
Real quickly, I do have one more question. I've mentioned this, uh, I think in passing to you, Frank, but I've also mentioned it to Dave. And just want to make sure, so, um, you know, in the EOC calls in the morning, Paige has done a great job of keeping us. Up to date on the financial side of, of things and what they're seeing. I just want to make sure that we're all coordinating on that side of it so that those numbers are being. Regularly updated in this spreadsheet so that we're, we're getting the most accurate count of what our, our available funds are. And just make sure that we're all, you know, all three parties, you. Paige, Dave on the public health side are all communicating regularly to make sure that those numbers are, are as close to real time as possible.
I'm glad, glad you brought that up, Commissioner Shude, because I was actually wondering that same question because the number that. We were just presented was different than the number we had just heard. So there may be some outline bills that, that they're already considering that you haven't been told about, Frank.
Right. There's almost a million dollars that we've spent on COVID so far.
Yeah, well, we've got five hundred and eighty-three on payroll. And we have three hundred and forty-five in year-to-date expenses. Those tie back to. Pages. Reconciliation as of middle of last week. So that's about a million dollars right there.
Yeah, we're, we're going through those to see what, we're taking them line by line to which ones they can apply for. If they can apply for CARES Act or they applied for FEMA or both, depending on which it is. And we're, that is now on her spreadsheet. She's going to continue with that. So we can have them identified.
So to, to answer your question directly, Kevin, Commissioner Shude, uh, the reconciliation or the, the. Listing from the Financial Services Office as of last week is included in here. As it relates to being either reimbursed by FEMA, other grants or by CARES Act.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead, Sharon.
I was gonna say Paige, Paige has a, a, a great printout that she can share. Um, it lists all the grants and, and how much is being deducted from them or, or billed to them. And she is amazing.
Yep. And I, and I could share that with the other commissioners as well so that you can follow where those dollars are going.
Please.
Will do.
Yeah. And just the reason I ask is because I was looking at our, you know, the daily situation report that comes out. And the one from this morning had the dedicated COVID expenses to date at nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. And so I, based on this conversation, I'm guessing that that's also, that's part of it is the, is the. Salary side of it, but then there's probably the remainder of that is in.
Materials.
Material and other related expenses, not directly related to staffing.
Correct. So those tie back to the five hundred and eighty-three thousand payroll related. And the three hundred and forty-five thousand COVID-related year-to-date expenses. That equals nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Okay.
So Frank, on your, uh, on your building ten, uh, I am supportive, but I just, I just want to. Tell you where I'm sitting on that whole thing. Uh, I'm not as concerned as much about REIT funds as I am. Our, our general fund and anything that you see an opportunity that, that we could utilize towards the general fund. Uh, expenditures I am more comfortable with. Uh, those body scanners and stuff like that, will you be able to take, uh, uh, any of that out of REIT? If not, then I think those may be more, more important right now than some of these other constructions. I'm not talking about a hundred percent, maybe, uh, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand out of REIT. Or, or seven hundred and fifty thousand to cover REIT funds compared to one point one million. If we have the, if we have the needs, if we have the computer needs, if we have the, you know, the I T. If we have the need for the scanners, the health, I just want to see those get the top priority and the businesses.
Ab- absolutely. The, uh, paying for. Body scanners and things of that nature would not be something available out of REIT.
That's what I thought. So if we're tied on money, I'm just saying, you know, I, I'd rather us expend more out of our REIT fund. That's not going to hurt our bottom line here because we, we have the money in REIT.
Correct.
You know, I have a, I have a goal that I've talked with Commissioner Shute over the years and, uh, I think Commissioner Trask, we've touched on a little bit. The idea that I'd still like to see us do a, each year, a block of monies for the different districts. So that we can start going after specific grants of things that we know, but, uh, even with that said, I think we can handle absorbing some of it out of REIT.
And we'll maximize that as much as possible.
In order for us to, to meet the, the, uh, the guidelines, the requirements from the state for our courts. I know that the courts, they are going to be, um, releasing a little bit more money or some, quite a bit more money. Can we check with them to make sure that we get all the money that Mason County deserves?
So in this case, um. We have allocated the seventy thousand for JAVs, Superior Court, and fifty thousand for District Court. All to come out of A O C funding, which is CARES funding through the courts system.
Right. Well, last week I heard that they were going to release more monies. So if we could check on that, that would be cool.
Absolutely as well.
Frank, could you also consider setting up a fire line, uh, of projects that could be expended quickly? Uh, for example, some of these construction, you could enter the contractor, get the expenses up quick enough. To make sure that we leave none of that money hanging at the very end of this project timeline. Uh, if we have a, if we have a date, you know, we meet that week before and make sure every. Dollar of that three point eight million dollars gets expended instead of going back.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And, um, well, actually, if we can move to the next item then, uh, which is the construction contract. So, um, the county has and the architect have been moving forward. Designing with the help of Superior and District Court, an oversized courtroom facility at building ten. The city has been working with us diligently as well to work through the permitting as well as the. Review process for those drawings. Um, because the county is in a, um, has an emergency declaration. And the requirements for competitive bidding have been relaxed. We didn't put an R F P out for the construction, uh, quotes. Uh, because we just don't have the time in order to receive those back. But what we did do was we tried to follow them as closely as possible. And shorten the time for the bidding process. We did have a set of drawings that went out, uh, to bid, um, uh, two weeks ago. We did get bids back on Wednesday evening. And we opened those bids up on Wednesday evening. And we have, uh, three bidders who bid for the project. Uh, and if you remember, the rough order of magnitude on this was about two point five million dollars. Uh, what we have are bid results from Rush Construction at two point six, seven, two million dollars. We have a bid from Mountain Construction at two point eight four, three million dollars. And, uh, we have a bid from Colvos Construction at two point two seven, three million dollars. For, uh, the work on building ten to do the oversized. Courtrooms as well as finish the seismic work on the building. So the request is, um, the, or the recommendation is, is that we go with the Colvos Construction bid. For two point two seven, three million dollars. And ask that it be, uh, that we put on the action agenda tomorrow, an A I A contract to let that work.
Kelly, how much of this can we do in-house?
Uh, with the time constraints, I don't think we can do anything. We've already done a lot. But I, I don't want to make it sound like it's above our head, but for the time, what we need to get this done. I don't have the manpower to, uh, do a lot of this in-house. I mean, I can rip some carpet up and I can rip some walls down. Um, but the big part of it, just moving, moving sprinkler pipes and, and stuff like that. I think we need to just let the pros go and get that done.
Thank you.
I'm comfortable with moving forward, uh, and getting that out. The, the only thing again that I ask is. Although, you know, we're planning on so much out of the CARES Act, just be prepared to. Change that number at the, at the end to be able to, if we need to absorb some more for things that are absolutely needed. We don't want it to come out of the general fund. We need, it, it would have to come out of the REIT funds because that's our. Our easiest to move around without impacting our wages and our, our employees and stuff like that.
Abs- absolutely. And obviously this is a prevailing wage job and the contract specifically said that this must be completed in a hundred and twenty days. So that there's, uh, most of the project will be completed by the October thirty-first deadline. And that's the urgency for getting it on the contract approval for tomorrow.
I, uh, I'm good with that. I think, um, you know, we know, we know how critical it is to the courts. To have, uh, have the space that they need to be able to conduct their business. Um, and keep, uh, staff, jurors, uh, and defendants, et cetera, safe, um, in this environment. And so I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that as well. I think most people know how frustrated I am by all the. Uh, the requirements that has been passed down to the counties and with the state withholding a lot of the monies that was due, that due to the counties. So, but we, we gotta make it work. We have no choice.
Okay, I will put it on then for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
The last item is a conversation in regards to reopening the county and the county offices. Um, and I see Patty is still on the line. Um, the offices on the second floor of the county courthouse or the main office, building one. Has a, uh, queuing system that's available for them. To avail the citizens of access to the auditors, assessors and the treasurer's office. And Patty, if you would kind of define and, and talk a bit about how you see that coming forward.
Sure. Thanks, Frank. Uh, Commissioners, we, as, as you recall, you approved a couple of months ago. It all starts, starts to run together in terms of timing. Sorry about that. Uh, funds to allow us to contract with a company called Qless, not Clueless, but Qless. We, we have, uh, completed that and where we are, um, ready to go live. Whenever we are ready to accept customers and that will allow people. To use a kiosk in the lobby, uh, text in, uh, use a, a link, uh, on the web. Uh, to, or phone in to get in line for a service. Beginning in September, we will have the ability to schedule appointments in advance. So right, right now, if we went live tomorrow, right now you could only get in line today. Um, it, it took some development work to do the future scheduling and that'll be on, I think, the second week in September. So that I could schedule an appointment to come in next Tuesday. We've worked closely with the treasurer's office and the assessor's office and so to, to separate out functions and. Arrange it so that people who need to do business with multiple offices can do so in one stop without it taking forever. So, uh, we think it's a nice system. It's, it is ready. The, the, the primary concern was just keeping people from jamming the upstairs lobby. Um, and, and keeping people downstairs, um. And, and just coming up when it's, when we're ready to serve them. Uh, we've had great cooperation from Kelly and his shop on, and the I T shop. And, um, setting up the kiosk, uh, in the downstairs lobby and a TV. I think it needs to be adjusted a little bit. But, um, we're, we're pretty much ready to go as soon as you commissioners are, are ready for us to, to reopen. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Patty, quick, uh, question from me. Um, first off, appreciate you and your, uh, your colleagues upstairs working on this and implementing this. Uh, what kind of support do you anticipate having to provide to folks, uh, at the kiosk, wherever that's located? How, how do you envision that happening with your staff? Number one. Number two. Uh, given where we are with cases, um, we just heard this morning another sixteen from over the weekend. My hesitation would be, uh, you know, maybe to wait until you're able to use the scheduling component of the system. But curious to hear what your thoughts are, um, in conversations with your staff on those two issues.
So i- in answer to the first question, it is our hope that signage will take care of most of the issues. I don't think any of our offices have enough staff to post somebody downstairs. Permanently, um, to, to help people navigate the, um, the kiosk, you know. It is, it is inevitable that people will end up coming upstairs without an. Um, appointment or without getting in line and, you know, and based on geography. Um, it is going to fall to the treasurer's office to deal with that the most because that's where they will walk in. So, you know, I guess the, the short answer to that is, um, we'll see. It regarding, I mean, regarding reopening, I mean, I. You know, I, I, I wish I had a good answer to that. I mean, you know, I think we are in position to. Protect our employees pretty well and all three offices, you know, the, again, Kelly's done. Kelly and his folks have done a great job in installing, uh, Plexiglas and, and doing what we need. To do to protect our employees as best we can. I think. And assuming that the system works reasonably well, I think we'll be, uh, protecting our customers. Too, you know, the, 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 the broader issue of what we do about the timing. Um, you know, I, I don't know. You know, I, I think, I mean, that really, I, I hate to completely punt on this, but, um, that does feel like a. A decision the county is going to have to make. I mean, we, we upstairs are ready to serve folks. Uh, when it's safe to do so. And I guess I would leave that to public health professionals and the commissioners. To decide when the right time to do that is because I, I mean, it just. I just don't know that I have the expertise to, to make that decision.
I think my opinion would be that when we open, I want to open as a county. I, I don't think it's wise to open certain areas before others are ready. And so I want to make sure that, that we are as a county able to open. It just makes more sense to me and I think it'd be easier for all of our staff.
I would agree with that.
And if I can add to that, inevitably. Those that are citizens that are trying to get upstairs. To the assessor's, auditor's or treasurer's office will end up coming downstairs. And, uh, inquiring as to how to get upstairs. So that puts the entire environment downstairs in a difficult predicament as well.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I, I, it is, I think, from what Frank says, I mean, it is inevitable that if somebody has trouble with the kiosk. That they're, assuming the front door is open, they're going to go in and turn right and try to get help. Because that's the closest human being to them and that's where they're going to go.
I wish we had an easy answer.
You know, I guess, uh. Yeah, I, you know, I guess, you know, my gut on this right now is my, given where we are with cases, I would, I would probably be more inclined to. Um, you know, kind of reevaluate in, in a week, um, based on the conversation we just had this morning with Lydia. Um, and Dave, um, and kind of understanding where we are from a. You know, the, the reality is we're getting more contact tracers onboard this week. Um, and any, in my opinion, at least, any successful reopening. Whether it be the, you know, the county buildings themselves or broadly in the community is contingent upon testing and tracing. And as we staff up on that, I'd like to have a chance with those folks on boarded, um, and then revisit the issue. That's, I mean, that's just my, my opinion on it at the moment.
So, so then what we can do is, um, I had put forward a copy of a Safe Start guideline. To the commission in draft form. Uh, we'll continue working with that. Um, and updating that and then come back to the board. Uh, at our next briefing to discuss what options are available. And what does reality look like at that point in time? And what makes sense as far as opening up the county.
If I could just real quick, again, from Patty, um, what's your sense? I, I know you guys have been doing a lot of work with folks calling in and making appointments and, and that kind of thing. Is, is that manageable for, you know, another week, two weeks, couple of weeks, whatever, you know, as, as we kind of evaluate the, the health side of this?
You know, I would say as, as long as our motor vehicle subagents remain open. And both the Belfair and Shelton Tabs and Titles up the Hill. Um, that, that has been a huge relief valve for us. Is, is the ability to help people who want to do business in person to, that it's less than a mile away to go see. You know, an office that is open. So, you know, from our perspective, it it is working pretty well. You know, I will say when when we are doing business. When we are meeting customers downstairs in the lobby and bringing them up. There are an awful lot of people in the lobby on a pretty regular basis, kind of crammed in there, trying to figure out what to do. For many, at least, I I would say anecdotally, many of whom. Are not are people whose first language is not English and are confused by things. We do have some signage in Spanish, but. You know. It's a challenge. We're also getting a ton of calls in my office about how to get a driver's license. Which is not something we do. But with the Shelton DMV closed, people want to know what to do. Yeah, so I mean, the short answer to your question is. Sure, I mean, what, you know, we can continue with this as long as Shelton Tabs and Titles and the Belfair licensing offices. Remain open. We can continue like this for the foreseeable future. I mean, it is not ideal, but we have figured out ways to serve people as best we can. We're issuing a lot of marriage licenses these days. It is summer after all. And and sort of have that down. So I mean. I guess the short answer is we're a lot better at this than we were in April. For better or for worse. But. There there is certainly nothing happening this week or next week that. Looms at me of saying we have to reopen. We got through boat license renewals in July and so. I don't think a week or two or. Or longer makes a significant difference for us. We figured out how to do this and how to do our jobs and serve folks as best we can.
I'm not speaking against, you know, takes a week or two. But I do want to point out there is an unintended consequence that is happening with the structure that they already have. And thinking about the whole county, it breaks my heart when I go out there and I see your staff, Patty, actually at a much tighter. Quarters with these people where they shouldn't be. They're literally inches away from them instead of having a distance separation. And there is no other option. And while they're down there, there's two or three other people that are down there. And I almost felt like I want to go out there a few times and shoot them all out there just to protect your employee. So I just wanted the other commissioners to know that I've seen that and you probably have too, but I want to remind you. Unintended consequences sometimes. We have to pay attention to that as well.
Yeah, with just just a word about that and with the with the Qless system, we had hoped to be able to put the monitor. Faith on the window face. Facing outside. So to see the monitor, you had to wait outside the lobby. We put it up that way and the sun came out and. The monitor overheated and shut off and so. So instead of having a eight hundred dollar monitor to to buy. A monitor that can be in direct sun would have cost six thousand dollars. So we didn't do that. So it is inside the lobby now. And so when we reopen. My hope to keep people lined up outside the lobby was a lot more expensive than than. I was willing to ask for funding for. So we have a regular TV, but it needs to be in the shade. So that was that was a great idea, but it didn't pan out.
I do think it's it's large enough that you can see it through the window.
Yeah. Unless unless there's reflection on the unless there the 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 sun is low enough. That it's shining on the window and then you can't see anything inside. So.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
So then we will bring this forward again. At our next briefing or as time. When appropriate allows us to.
Sounds good.
We don't have anything else on our agenda except that Kelly, you may want to speak for a moment. About all those white cars in building ten.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yes. So I passed out twenty-three brand new cars today. I think everybody was excited. So you'll be seeing them out and about. With that being said, I will be coming for you real soon. To get a surplus of the old vehicles so we can surplus those to enterprise and get those gone. So just a heads up on that.
Nice work. Appreciate it.
Yep, and eh eh nice work Kelly and everybody else that has been working with the enterprise group. That includes insurance and.
Absolutely.
The Dawn and Nicole and. The entire team, Ross and Jason and. The white fleet, as it's called, is those vehicles that are not police pursuit vehicles. They just happen to be white in our case as well. The police pursuit vehicles, although they're starting to trickle in, will be coming in in the next couple of months.
Ellie, were they parked down the road this weekend? Because I sure got a lot of, I got a lot of phone calls, man.
I'm telling you what, they were all parked at the Olson Furniture Building and I came down, I swirled fifty times just to check and make sure nobody messed with them.
No.
I'm sure you guys got tons of calls asking what the heck.
Yeah.
Frank and Commissioners, we had one other thing. We were, we received a question from Alexandra Elrich. Reference Parks and Trails doing a. A letter for the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. They wanted a letter from Parks and Trails. Fully supporting the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group's Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Park Project.
Right. I think Frank was going to draft a letter of support.
We we did issue a letter of support back in February of twenty sixteen. From the county and that would be my question. Is that sufficient?
Can't hear you, Randy.
You're muted, Rand.
Yeah. Hey, it's good for all of you that I am. You should have heard what I was saying out here. I am up on this one and and this did come before us in the past. They are in need of a new one. Because of the different funding and things that they're needing. And I want to remind the commission that this was actually a very specific and special project. Imagine a place where they put a a pond for fishing for ADA people as well as a regular park. This was a pretty spectacular plan where they've already worked with the Port of Allen and the school district's already given over the property to do it. And I hope that we will be able to get them a letter of support as soon as possible so they can go out because there is a funding opportunity right now that's before them.
So I will then get one for the board to review this afternoon. To put on i- if approved, the action agenda for tomorrow.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
And that's all we have.
Today for tomorrow's agenda.
What was that?
I'd like to review all the additions we made for tomorrow's agenda.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I have for tomorrow, we're adding on the approval for the small works roster for the Valley Rose Culvert Replacement Project. Approval of the temporary special pay for Michelle Morris. For work performed out of a higher classification. The interagency agreement with Fish and Wildlife for access at the Haven Lake Community. And authorization for the county engineer to sign an agreement. For the ecology block wall for Cheryl and Richard Alexander. The contract with the Public Health Institute for the COVID nineteen case investigation and contact tracing. The letter of support for the Sweetwater Creek Project. Appoint Kathy Shapiro to the Housing and Behavioral Health Board. Approval of the consolidated homeless grant for housing in essential needs, the hand money. And approval with Commerce for the five hundred thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars. For the eviction rent assistance program. And the general services CBA. The labor agreement and then the construction contract for building ten.
Diane?
Yes.
I also had on my list to create post and bill a permit technician for. The Community Services Department.
Yes.
For the permit tech.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have that cover sheet. I'll bring it over.
Okay. Okay, so I'll reissue the agenda for tomorrow.
All right. Thank you.
And then can we just make sure that. Staff is available for our meeting tomorrow. For further explanation of those. That's a, that's a lot to add. But it make sure that we have staff available to brief any of those. Will do.
And also just to clarify, Dave did on the July twenty eighth meeting, he did get approval to add one permit tech, one or two. Back on July twenty eighth. So I assume that's already done. It doesn't need to go tomorrow.
Yeah, I I believe that's correct.
Can we? Confirm that with him?
I believe we need to have a resolution to confirm for a post and a fill of a new FTE. Position, an additional position under date. Development Department, Community Development.
I don't have a resolution. We don't usually put positions on resolution, no. And it's the existing position, the CBA. I just understood he went from two to three.
So when was that, Diane?
On July twenty eighth. Because he brought forward last week that he had to get his clerical that was vacating filled. And that he was adding a permit tech. He wanted to get that out.
So when he put that on the agenda already?
For July twenty eighth.
Okay, then that would suffice it because we just need to increase his FTE count by one. I was unaware that he did that.
Yeah, he add one, he added one permit technician, one or two FTE.
And we all agreed to it as a commission, but I don't know if that was sufficient enough for you, though. Do we need to have that on the agenda for tomorrow?
It was on, you voted on it on July twenty eighth. It was approved back then.
We did vote on it. Okay.
Yeah.
Then it doesn't need to be on tomorrow.
Correct.
Then we had two commissioner discussion items.
Commissioner Shady, I think you're first.
Yeah, so I had a conversation with the commission regarding. Public participation in our in our meetings going forward. Whether we whether we reopen parts of the county or all of the county for in-person service. Or we, you know, and as we kind of continue to adhere to the. The OPMAs proclamation put forward by the governor's office. One of the ideas that I floated with Frank and Diane over the weekend was. Allowing participation via the Zoom meetings. I know we've all participated, whether they be with WASAC. Or or other groups where the host is able to. You know, admit people and then mute and unmute at the appropriate times for comment. I think this would be a good compromise as we stuck, we continue to work through. Sort of the spatial challenges that we have in in the chamber, given the limits on group sizes. And that kind of thing. This would alleviate some of those concerns in the interim. And allow public participation in our meetings for public comment, removing. Removing items for further discussion as well as our public hearings as those come up. And so I'd like to entertain a conversation around that. Staff would have to work through the hosting side of it and kind of delegate who would be. Doing the doing the sort of meeting controls at that point, but I think it's worthwhile considering as this appears to be a prolonged. Continuation of the OPMAs restrictions. I know it's been brought to our attention that 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 that's at our discretion. And so I think this is a compromise, given the amount of COVID cases we're still seeing. To allow for participation, but to do it in a way that doesn't. Bring a bunch of people into a room together. You know, but still kind of gets it to where we need to be with participation. So just want to throw that out there, have a conversation with the commission. And hear maybe some thoughts from you guys and staff as well.
I'd be, am I on? Yeah, I'd like them to bring something, what it looks like for our next briefing, actually how they would structure that. That'd be nice.
There are other options as well. Some of the other counties are using, they do Facebook Live. So people can, you know, comment that way. We still have to have somebody monitoring the comments there. In addition to having Mason Webb. I would love to open our doors back up, but meeting their restrictions as far as the overflow and and everything, I think that that's. We're not able to do that as a small county with limited buildings and and resources. But. There's, there's got to be a way that we can that we can do this.
I would, I would actually love for us to be able to allow them just to come into the room even and and do it.
Yeah, the only problem with that is is meeting the overflow. You have to, we have to ma- make sure that there is sufficient. Let's see, there's, there has to be at least six feet. Between separation. They have to wear a face covering. And then, and then we also have to have an overflow, a physical overflow location.
Yeah.
Which provides them with the ability to hear and to speak at the same time.
Yeah. Go ahead.
One, one of the items that Zoom allows us to do is the ability to. Control the. Open microphones. And open microphones as the board authorizes for communication. It also allows for chat. Functions where those that have been. Entered into the Zoom meeting can chat to the host and the host can then communicate that into the meeting. So that's something that our support services can take a look at. And maybe bring forward to one of our briefings, a presentation of what it might look like. As a full board meeting and how that would work within the Zoom environment. We'll also take a look at that Facebook Live. Option and see if that's available. I do know that Zoom can be made, the URL to get into this Zoom meeting can be made public. But that can be also. Curtailed as to communication into a board meeting environment.
Right. I think I'd hate to have a Zoom bomb.
I mean, WASAC has meetings with a hundred and fifty attendees. And it's pretty well controlled. So I think that we could do that as well within our environment.
Maybe you can bring something to us so we could see what it all looks like. It'd be appreciated.
Will do. Thank you. And the last item for discussion was the CGI video.
Right, or or the other? Other commissioners, were you able to take a look at that email?
Yeah, we we've been through this before with Emma. It was, you know, there was nothing much to it. There wasn't no, didn't appear to be no risk or anything like that, but it did turn out to be kind of a nothing burger when it was all over, said and done with. There wasn't much to it. There wasn't much access. It wasn't much. We, the county itself did not gain much from it, except for a little bit of an exposure for our faces and stuff out there on Facebook and a few other places. Just my my opinion on that.
Yeah, I I remember. For participating in this in twenty seventeen. And I I frankly, after I did the, because I I've did a part of it, then I know Commissioner Drexler at the time. Took them all over the county and and that kind of, but I don't ever recall seeing anything anywhere from it. It was, I guess, a good experience, but besides that, I'm not sure. who benefited from it or how or when or why or where or any of that. So I, that would be my only caution. I mean, it's like, like Randy said, I mean, you're, you're not putting a whole lot into it, but you're not really getting anything out of it either from what I recall.
Yeah, you, you get a landing page and stuff and they utilize that for marketing the stuff that they want to market. If somebody has questions and it comes up in a search engine. But again, it just wasn't anything that, that we thought. I always, you know, it's no secret, I don't like being on the camera, so I stay away from it. And I'm perfectly content with you guys doing it to your heart's content. As long as I'm not required. But yeah, there wasn't much for the county that, we didn't even really get much in the way of marketing or advertising.
There's a, there's a link on our, our, our page.
Yeah.
And I did take a look at it and Kevin, you did a great job speaking on camera. Good job. But I think, yeah, the only benefit that I see are to maybe some of the businesses around here that, that are able to, to advertise on there, but I don't know, they said that we could just stick with what we've got. It's no cost to us. It's completely up to, up to us and you know, if we want to change it, we can. If not, that's fine too. They said that some counties have added in COVID information on theirs and.
They never brought us our, our stuff to see what kind of, of impact they've had, what kind of, of hits. And hits don't mean anything, by the way. Yeah, bots, every time the word blue is searched for, a bot will find all the word blue and that's what comes up as a search. That's why the Chamber of Commerce brought something to us some years ago, showed 1.5 million hits. It's like, that doesn't mean anything. They hit Hood Canal or they hit kayaking and there's kayak in the Hood Canal, that's what that was, so. But they never brought us anything. They said they were going to, but they never did.
I would also maybe think about running, you know, getting Rachel Hansen's input on it. You know, and seeing what her thoughts are, if this was effective or is it, if it was a good supplement to the work that we're, we're paying her to do or if she has alternative ideas. Other than that, I, I don't, I don't have a real burning desire to redo this.
Sounds good to me. Can we send it over to Rachel, Frank, and, and have her comment on it?
Will do.
She does, she does more for our county than.
Yes, she does.
Than most, so I, I value her opinion and would really like to tap into her knowledge.
I will. There, I have one last item, just a correction. On the general services contract, I had the across the board increases reversed. The increase in 2019 was 2%. 2020 was one and three quarter and 2021, it was one and a half percent. So the across the boards were reversed. Just to clarify.
And then we need a budget amendment later this year, is that correct? Is that how that'll?
If it's necessary, yes. And so the only other thing was, and just to remind the board, we had made a step increase, an additional step in that contract as well. But I had the across the boards backwards.
I'll call you on that one a little bit later, Frank, because that's interesting. It's good for us, actually, but.
That's all we had.
All right, it looks like we now have an executive session.
And I'll start that up here as soon as we're finished with this one.
Okay.
All right.
What did you say, Kevin?
I said, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourned.
And then Frank, you're going to send.